Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Yes, sir. You're the one.
Your name.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Alex Tsiatzos.
Can you stop it in your place?
Yes, ma'am. It is T.S.I.A. T.S. Dobets.
Thank you.
I think the council has time this morning. My wife and I and our two kids live in Middle Creek Manor, subdivision on War Court. Our direct next door neighbor, that fine gentleman right there, Mr. Ross, a couple doors down from him is Chad Weinbrenner, someone else I think also. We have a little problem.
Where exactly is Middle Creek?
Shally Road.
That's correct. On Shally Road between May and Bush and Hatchery. And Shally Road is the problem specifically because right behind our road, War Court, is Shally Road, which is, if you know it, is a very windy, curvy type of road. And the State Highway Department appropriately put up some traffic control signs, arrows, be careful as to turn here, that sort of thing. Well, for whatever reason, some folks like to shoot up those signs. In March and again a few weeks ago, some of those shots hit houses on our cul-de-sac. And thankfully, no one was hurt, but one house for sure that was hit had significant damage. And kids are outside playing that cul-de-sac, who might get, so it's quite scary. After the first incident, I called the State Highway Department, I spoke with Mr. Clohan, they indicated they could not move the sign. Now, I understand they have regulations to follow, but even a few feet, either lowering the actual sign, it's probably about seven or eight feet high, or moving it over left or right a few feet would make a huge difference because it's one particular sign. On the driver's side, you're heading south at the curve before you get to the creek, that's the problem. That's the sign that all the bullets are either missing or going through getting houses. So even moving it a little bit would help. I haven't heard back from the state after the second incident. So to stop this from happening, I'm here today to ask for your help if there's anything the council can do. Now, it could be as simple as maybe relying on informal relationships, the highway folks saying, hey, guys, can you move this a little bit? That could help. Or if the council could put up its own sign, something along the road saying, please don't shoot the signs, their house is here, something in your discretion would be appropriate to stop this. Deputy Peck is doing a commendable job investigating this, I understand. I didn't talk to him myself, but my neighbors did. I understand he's looking for a floor to have some cameras installed to have, or plate readers, or some other technology that might help us catch what's going on. I suspect the people who are doing this don't know about it, and if we publicize it a little bit with some cameras, dummy camera, or a sign or something, it would stop. I'm working with the HOA to try to get this done also, but I think the more people who can help the better, and it comes from the county, although at least if it's done efficiently, I think it'll have the most impact. So I've asked the council to consider whether it can help us on any of those points, either somehow working with the highway department, putting his own sign up, or authorizing Sheriff and Deputy Peck to install cameras or other devices to help stop this problem. I know you probably get a lot of requests for information for assistance like this, and I know you can't honor everyone, but this is a real public safety issue, and thankfully no one's been hurt, but the next time it could be different. And I presume Shally Road has its own challenges that a lot of roads don't have, so if we can take care of it here, there may not be a lot of other requests like this down the road. I'd like to thank you for your time, I don't know if you have any questions.
Who's your delegate?
Eric Householder.
How many want to talk to Eric Householder also?
Well, we do have a working relationship. I know Eddie has the best working relationship with the state road because of being in his prior position, so we'll reach out to them about that. But I can tell you that we'll talk to the sheriff's department as well, talk to the sheriff, I'm sorry, and see what he can do. He's very accommodating, because moving the sign isn't the problem. It's the ones that decide to shoot the signs, and they shoot them a lot in different places and have no idea what's behind them. So hopefully we'll find, they'll be able to find out who's doing it and put them in jail. And Tim will put them to work, replacing signs.
Please approve.
All right.
All right. Thank you, folks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I was just going to say it has to be pretty important for him to take time out of his day.
Right. Yeah, your family.
I'm sorry, councilman, I apologize.
No, 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 I was just saying, we know it had to be pretty important for you to take your time off to come in here, to protect your family and stuff.
Well, thank you. It's been very distressing to me and my wife and to our neighbors, Brian and his family is there too, and a lot of good folks here are scared now. They take him to move anywhere and he's getting shot up, so, yes, sir, that's very stressful. Thank you.
I'll take a drive through there maybe today for the home way home perhaps, and reach out to Mr. Clohan and Bill Keller, who are safety guy for this region.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Hold on.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I didn't see you.
I just wanted to formally invite you all to our community and community day downtown Martin Circle Saturday. It's going to be from 2 to 6.
2 to 6 on Saturday?
Right there at the square. Hopefully we'll have a good turnout, we've got a regular commercial loan.
Okay, and what's the event?
Unity in the community.
Okay.
We're giving out food bags, it's bouncing houses, space painting, we're giving away free food, we have food vendors coming, P&amp;G's coming, show people how to make their own laundry dish and hatch on, dishwasher turner.
Right.
Lowridge is coming, and everybody shows the kids how to make rainbows. We have all these different meat companies that are coming out, and it's just for everybody.
Okay, well, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Zondrea Lanson. Excuse me.
Okay, well, thank you for being here, and I'm su-
I'm washing off, wrapping up the car too. Big pile of junky.
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll attempt to be there, we're very busy, but we'll try to be there. And thank you for taking the time to be here today. All right, anybody else? All right, now, need a motion to approve the agenda.
President, I'm going to approve the agenda if there's no addendums or modifications for Thursday, July 29th.
Have a motion in the floor, do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just to point a couple things out. First and foremost, I want to inform the council that we now have in our possession the 34 Explore Police Interceptors that we ordered last August. The last eight were delivered yesterday. If you get down to 750 Baltimore Street, they were able to get all three.
All right, knock it down. Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Yes, sir. You're the one.
Your name.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Alex Tsiatzos.
Can you stop and replace?
Yes, ma'am. It is T.S.I.A.T.S. Dobets. I think the council was on this morning. My wife and I and our two kids live in Middle Creek Manor subdivision on War Court. Our direct next door neighbor, that fine gentleman right there, Mr. Ross. A couple of doors down from him is Chad Weinbrenner, someone else I think also. We have a little problem.
Where exactly is Middle Creek?
Shelly Road.
Okay.
That's correct. On Shelly Road between May and Bush and Hatchery. And Shelly Road is the problem specifically because right behind our road, War Court, is Shelly Road, which is, if you know it, is a very windy, curvy type of road. And the State Highway Department appropriately put up some traffic control signs, arrows, be careful as a turn here, that sort of thing. Well, for whatever reason, some folks like to shoot up those signs. In March, and again a few weeks ago, some of those shots hit houses on our cul-de-sac. And thankfully, no one was hurt, but one house for sure that was hit had significant damage. And kids are outside playing at cul-de-sac. They're mocking. So it's quite scary. After the first incident, I called the State Highway Department, I spoke with Mr. Clohan. They indicated they could not move the sign. Now, I understand they have regulations to follow, but even a few feet, either lowering the actual sign, it's probably about seven or eight feet high, or moving it over left or right a few feet would make a huge difference because it's one particular sign. On the driver's side, you're heading south at the curve before you get to the creek. That's the problem. That's the sign that all the bullets are either missing or going through or getting houses. So even moving it a little bit would help. I haven't heard back from the state after the second incident. So to stop this from happening, I'm here today to ask for your help if there's anything the council can do. Now, it could be as simple as maybe relying on informal relationships, the highway folks saying, hey, guys, can you move this a little bit? That could help. Or if the council could put up its own sign, something along the road saying, please don't shoot the signs, their house is here, something in your discretion would be appropriate to stop this. Deputy Peck is doing a commendable job investigating this, I understand. I didn't talk to him myself, but my neighbors did. I understand he's looking for a Ford to have some cameras installed to have, or plate readers, or some other technology that might help us catch what's going on there. I suspect the people who are doing this don't know about it, and if we publicized it a little bit with some cameras, dummy camera, or a sign or something, it would stop. I'm working with the HOA to try to get this done also. But I think the more people who can help, the better, and it comes from the county. Although at least if it's done efficiently, I think it'll have the most impact. So I'd ask the council to consider whether it can help us on any of those points, either somehow working with the highway department, putting his own sign up, or authorizing Sheriff and Deputy Peck to install cameras or other devices to help stop this problem. I know you probably get a lot of requests for information for assistance like this. And I know you can't honor everyone, but this is a real public safety issue, and thankfully, no one's been hurt, but the next time it could be different. And I presume Shelly Road has its own challenges that a lot of roads don't have, so if we can take care of it here, there may not be a lot of other requests like this down the road. I'd like to thank you for your time. I don't know if you have any questions.
Well, who's your delegate?
Eric Householder.
I want to contact Eric Householder also.
Well, we do have a working relationship. I know Eddie has the best working relationship with the state road because of being in his prior position. So we'll reach out to them about that. But I can tell you that we'll talk to the sheriff's department as well, talk to the sheriff, I'm sorry, and see what he can do. He's very accommodating because moving the sign isn't the problem. It's the ones that decide to shoot the signs, and they shoot them a lot in different places and have no idea what's behind them. So hopefully, we'll find, they'll be able to find out who's doing it and put them in jail. And Tim will put them to work, replacing signs.
Please approve.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I'm just gonna say it has to be pretty important for him to take time out of his day.
Right. Yeah, you're family.
I'm sorry, councilman. I apologize.
No, no, no. I was just saying, we know it had to be pretty important for you to take your time off to come in here to protect your family and stuff.
Well, thank you. It's been very distressing to me and my wife and to our neighbors, Brian and his family is there too, and a lot of good folks here are scared now. They take him to move anywhere and he's getting shot up, so. Yes, sir. That's very stressful.
Thank you.
I'll take a drive through there maybe today for the home up way home perhaps, and reach out to Mr. Clohan and Bill Keller, who's our safety guy for this region. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda? I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I didn't see you.
I just wanted to formally invite you all to our community, Community Day in downtown Martin's Circle Saturday. It's gonna be from 2 to 6.
2 to 6 on Saturday?
Right there at the square. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. We've got a regular commercial loan and
Okay, and what's the event?
Unity in the community.
Okay.
Freeway, we're giving out food bags, it's bouncing houses, space painting, we're giving away free food. We have food vendors coming, P&amp;G's coming, show people how to make their own laundry dish detergent.
Right.
Lowridge is coming, and everybody shows kids how to make rainbows. We have all these different meat companies that are coming out, and it's just for everybody.
Okay, well, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Zondria Lanson.
Okay, well, thank you for being here, and
I'm watching off, wrapping up the car too. Big pile of tickets.
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll attempt to be there. We're very busy, but we'll try to be there. And thank you for taking the time to be here today. All right, anybody else? All right, now, need a motion to approve the agenda.
President, I'm going to approve the agenda. If there's no addendums or modifications for Thursday, July 29th.
Have a motion in the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just to point a couple of things out. First and foremost, I want to inform the council that we now have in our possession the 34 Explorer police interceptors that we ordered last August. The last eight were delivered yesterday. If you get down to 750 Baltimore Street, they were able to get all 30 vehicles inside the building. So that they can outfit it. It's really impressive when you see 30 black police interceptors sitting there. So we're in the process of outfitting them now. We have paid all of the outfitting. We've paid for the Explorers, and we're about 152,000 under budget right now. And we still, but we still have that one. We actually ordered 31. The one was to replace one that had been abolished. If you get down by 750, stop in, or it's really impressive.
I've been wanting to stop in anyway.
On the second page of your purchase order, you'll see a payment to Central Square Technology in the amount of $231,156.56. This is the software that runs our CAD system. So $218,688.56
That's annual, dude.
Is the annual software subscription, which will come out of 911, and then the $12,468 out of IT is for the subscriptions that's needed to sustain and maintain that system. You'll also see a payment to Berry Solutions in the amount of $121,946. We got a $105,000 grant for electronics in this building. So $104,474 is to put an interactive, is the equipment that we need to put an interactive wall.
But we get all the day reports, sir.
If you've seen the interactive wall as you go into the day report center, sorry, Tim, this is gonna be better.
Sorry, Tim. Sorry, Tim.
So we have paid that. We paid $104,474 for the electronics, which will be reimbursed from the grant. On page 1 to 4th page of your purchase order log, you'll see that
Is that gonna be, could that be even done by mobile? Still where we can move it around in the building, like right now, put something close to accessory in the tax office?
No.
Can't be done wireless?
It's fixed mounted. It's on a
Most walls are.
Yeah, you can pull them out. They're on the TV mount like you would for your flat screens.
Right.
But they're not, they're not mobile. These are gigantic, gigantic screens.
So you're saying a carpenter can't do it?
No.
That's bull crap.
On the, on the fourth page, you'll see that at the direction of the council, we did make our dues payments to the West Virginia Association of Counties and West Virginia County Commissioners Association. I've talked to Jonathan. You'll also see that we ordered 144 Narcan kits in the amount of $10,800. Again, that's through a grant that will be reimbursed. And then finally, on, next to the last page, you'll see payments to Potomac Edison. Our July utility bill is up for this building and our July compared to June, and it's also up for the Judicial Center. But both July 2020, the bills that we got and are paid in July 2021 are less than the bills that we paid in June and July of 2020. So we continue to tweak the systems, and we are starting to see the return on those investments that we made in our HVAC system.
Yeah, we gotta continue to beat that down. I don't wanna pay into anybody's retirement plan.
But Gary is actually in Atlanta as we speak. The manufacturer of the technology for our lights in the HVAC system for the Judicial Center has asked him to come down and look at the plan and talk, you know, technical side of what we can do in the Judicial Center. We hope to bring something into the council early fall.
Just go into LEDs.
LEDs and do a plant for the Judicial Center similar to what we have out back at the Dunne County.
All right, any questions for Mr. Davis? No internal budget revisions, Mr. Davis? We have some changes status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Catherine Morgan as a Recovery Resource Coordinator with an annual salary of $46,000 effective August the 16th, 2021. We have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Gerald Leroy as a Building Custodian with an annual salary of $24,786 effective August 9th, 2021. New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of 911, for a telecommunicator one, which is Kathleen Noel Dunn with an annual salary of $39,795. No, she's actually a telecommunicator one.
She's a telecommunicator one at the Sheen's Row.
Yeah.
Just, just as a point of information, and I'm glad Penny brought it up, we typically bring in new 911 dispatchers as call takers, which they have to get their certifications, their seven certifications that they need. We're actually hiring this particular employee. She has seven years' experience with the Frederick City Communications Center and has all her
credentials.
credentials. The reason she can't start before August the 30th is that she's actually one of their trainers. So she's training in a new class and didn't want to leave in the middle of that commitment that she had made to Frederick City.
And I'm not so sure that we've ever had somebody come with that experience enter 911.
So we're starting to turn the corner in some areas.
Yeah, that's good. That's good news.
How's our salary comparison?
Huh?
Our salary comparison still good?
We're, we're a little low. We're, we've actually fallen behind. Washington County, we've had a discussion with Jennifer, how some proposed increases that we're gonna discuss later today would actually help us recruit and efforts.
I think, Jim, what happened is the last increase in pay that we gave caught us up.
Well, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, when we did that, we said that now we gotta try to
Maintain.
maintain it.
That's what I was saying, because for us to recruit this person, we had to be pretty competitive.
Right.
Well, she has just moved to this area too. She doesn't want to commute to Frederick. Just talking about public safety pay increases, we did give public safety employees a pay increase last year, but we did not the year before. So we've actually we've actually
Yeah, we've done that rotation that we set. All right, we also have the change of status received from Jennifer Swisher for 911, Director of 911 for Kayla Orson, as she is going from a full-time to part-time telecommunicator. Her salary will go from $47,975 to $19.50 per hour effective July 26, 2021.
And that's due to childcare issues, but she will be available. She has joint custody with her husband. She's a single mom, so she will be available to work for us on Friday evenings, Saturdays and Sundays, which will be a big help to us, and she's a good employee.
All right. Letter of resignation received from Emergency Services for Brianna Sims effective August 6, 2021. Letter of resignation received from Janet Wright effective July 20th, 2021. Janet?
Custodian.
Okay. Any questions?
I got a question. The, you got down there, I did not know that Mike Lang was in charge of custodians.
Uh huh. It's been about
We've actually kind of married our custodial services with community service.
And maybe, maybe I forgot about it. I don't know. I mean, I thought, I don't remember seeing that before.
And we did that. We did that.
Must have been sleeping.
Me, Hufnberger resigned.
Wake up.
All right. Must not have been paying attention to that one. I don't know how that happened.
Did y'all cut up down with?
I'm back up.
Yeah, we probably just had that done. We just had Reed ahead on that. Probably a month ago with another, probably twice in the last couple.
And you know, maybe when I heard the Lang, it just, I thought was, we were talking about Jack and didn't pay attention to. Right on, right on. I got a bald spot right there. It's pulling over my head so fast.
All right, we have minutes from July. Any questions on the changes statuses? All right. We have minutes from July 15th. Everyone was present other than Vice President Whitaker. Any changes or corrections on those?
Mr. President, I'm moved to accept the minutes of the July 15th, 2021 meeting as submitted.
Have a motion in the floor. Have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Moving on. Moving on to county council calendars. We'll be here next Thursday, same time, same channel. And boards and commissions, we have nothing tonight. We have planning commission on Monday at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, the 3rd, we have 5:00 PM Sewer District, 6:00 PM Stormwater. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? We have a bond reduction for Stone Crest Phase
Mr. President, before you, just a couple of things apart, good. Just a reminder that youth fair begins Saturday.
Right.
And we do have our regular booth that crawls from the 4-H food trailer. We have every night, Penny, correct? We have, if I'm wrong, we have every night except Monday covered.
Correct.
With county employees. But you, any of you are welcome to come down, and we've ordered, we actually got a portable high-top table with three portable folding director's chairs to put under the canopy this year to, the furniture that we had down there was pretty old. But if you'd like to go down any evening to work the booth, let Penny know. We have some extra tickets. I think Council President Pope and Haber will be down there on Wednesday.
Or I think they'll be down on Friday.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Next Thursday, which is the
I'm gonna be out of town too.
And who donated that nice space that we sat out in? Can you do that?
Well, I helped get them established in there, but it was amazing shade.
Okay, just wanted to get it all recharged. Little plug in there. It is. It's very nice.
I'd much rather go there than the planning commission on Monday.
Done.
I won't be here Monday. We're gonna actually reach out to the other electives to see if maybe Mrs. Malk would like to go down and be in our
Or the sheriff, a big group.
Next Thursday afternoon, which is August the 5th, at 2:00 here in your meeting room, we will be meeting with the stakeholders in this building to discuss the proposed master plan, which we hope, next 2:00 next Thursday, that we hope to present to the council in the next, in the next month. We did meet with the architect. The building committee met with the architect last Thursday afternoon. We fine tuned the plan a little bit at Council President Pope and Haber's request. We're going to meet with the stakeholders first, just to let them know what's being proposed, and then soon thereafter, we'll be bringing it in, what we're in Josh, and get to meet with you, similar to what we did with Crawford Building. Fair chief interviews, we received 36 applications from all over the country. We put together a panel composed of Jen Swisher, Mike Lang, and Randy Lilly. They interviewed nine candidates. They reduced it to five. I have my last fire chief candidate interview tomorrow. If it's agreeable to the council, I would like to bring in the three finalists during the afternoon of August the 19th. I've checked, we've checked all your calendars, and it appears that you all will at least be in town. So what I'd like to do is bring them in for an hour.
Each, right.
One, three, and four in executive session like we've done in the past. Some very, very good candidates. So is that okay with you, if we extend your meeting on the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay. And then last but not least, two weeks ago, we received proposed changes to the bylaws of the Development Authority, which eventually the council will have to adopt. Do you, do you want those bylaws distributed to you electronically? Do you want to have a joint meeting with the Development Authority, which we haven't done, just to discuss the bylaws and some of the proposed changes? Just if you want to give me some direction, I'll
I'd say send, give everybody a hard copy of it so we can mark it up, because that seems like it's the easiest way for us to do it, at least for me.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll, if nobody's opposed, why don't we joint meet and go over that real quick?
Those are the red line copies.
Yeah, I have the red line copy that I'll send out to everybody. That's all I have, sir. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's all right. All right, so now we're moving on to a bond reduction. Stone Crest Phase 1, Section 1, BCP file number is 2011-320. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction request for Stone Crest Phase 4, Section 2, lots 237 to 260. BCP file number is 2101-006. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. A bond reduction request for Stone Crest Phase 1, Section 4, lots 40 to 51. BCP file number 2107-263. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. A bond reduction request for Stone Crest Grading Permit, BCP file number R01151-15. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. A bond release request for P&amp;G Project Independence Pond. Number 1 diversion, BCP file number 2106-207, tied to a 2105-199. Bond number 107274679. BCP file number is R01151-15. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. So tell us a little bit about that one, Brian, the bond release on the Independence Pond.
Brian? This here has to do with one of the retention ponds to where there was basically a redesign for, for the retention area before, I should have brought a drawing. I apologize. That way everyone would have seen it. But it basically is keeping water, in a nutshell, keeping it away from the crest field.
That's what
It basically
So this ties in with that broad, the diversion ditch and all the piping, Pike Side Waterway?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what it is.
Okay. And that's what I was thinking it was about, and I was, I was thinking, I'm not so sure where we are then on the diversion and all that stuff in the Pike Side Waterway, or whether we wanted to hold on to this pond until that got done?
Well, that still has 180-day hold. That's not a complete release. We still have 180-day hold on that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that's just a small percentage.
Yes, sir, it is.
Right. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that we should release it.
It's possible.
I agree with you. I mean, and we've sent all that out for bid. All that's been out for bid already. And I would suspect that that's probably gonna be a, I would suspect that the Executive Committee is probably going to be reviewing that in the Development Authority here real soon. But I wouldn't think you'd want to release it until that's figured out.
All right, that's what I was thinking.
I would have to ask, is that not a separate project?
It will be, but it pertains to the water issue of coming out of that pond.
And I'm very happy that it's being addressed, you know, number one, by protecting that subdivision, and then I know the solution to it is moving it on down. I was just thinking, if this project is completed, why are we holding just that very little bit of amount of money compared to the entire project of moving the water to the waterway? As, to me, it's a, it's a different project.
It's, it's a different, it's a part of the diversion of that pond, that's trying to, trying to bring the water the other way to the south, right?
That's That's correct.
So it's directly tied into that pump.
They have, they have to pump.
Is that what, they're pumping it?
Well, I'm sure they're pumping it to, to-
Right now.
Create the reservoir that they would need once it, to, to, to regulate the water. So, I mean, that's, that's, we can, anybody have any, any issues with the bond reductions? I don't think we do. I guess we, it sounds like we need to have a little bit more discussion on the bond release with P&amp;G. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be too far down the road. Once that project is awarded and ready to go, I think then we can release the pond. But until then, I think I'd, I'd like to hold on to it.
I mean, and you all obviously have, you know, a better understanding of, you sort of on that board.
Was there, was there, was there any sinkholes developed out there in that area? I mean, I, I heard somebody said something to me.
Yeah, I think they were talking about right there at that one, right at the river trap.
Right, and that's, that's in Crestfield.
Yeah.
Right, I know that one, but I thought somebody said there was another one that was developed on the other side.
Even though my knowledge was in Crestfield on this, on Crestfield side.
And that's not really, I don't think it's a sinkhole. It's more so just the amount of water washing out.
Correct.
All right, so, gentlemen, gentlemen, y'all have any comments on this?
Well, it's not much of a reduction amount anyway.
Well, the reduction amount was 1275.
Yeah. Right. It's pretty small. So, no, I have to probably-
The reason my department honored the request is because the N.O.N.E. gave us their certification that it was too standard.
Well, you're definitely right about that. I mean, it's only a total bond amount of 15 grand. With that said, I guess, okay, I think you're-
Not gonna do a whole lot of-
I think you're, I think you're right, both of you. So, I guess I'll accept it, right, I'll personally accept to release the bond. I mean, that's not gonna, that's not enough to seed somewhere.
It's proper procedure for the law.
All right. So we'll leave it all in the consent agenda then. All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Shall I move?
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning. You have a little bit of activity for us this morning, on some exonerations and one consolidation.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
It's busy time, I'll lose a little bit, you know, they end up, it's kind of weird. You have personal property, I've got two sheeps, eight on first, three on second, and eleven total. For reasons that's listed there, key log, if it takes that type of thing. Total of all of them, two sheeps, it goes up to, or those eleven. It's a total of $1,971, like we said.
Entertained a motion on 11 personal property tax exonerations due to officer.
Mr. President, I'm moved to accept the 11 personal property exonerations in the amount of $1,971 and 19th.
Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Good, thank you.
You have the 10 real estate?
I do have real estate that's gone away since this week. And what's the big one down there at the bottom for Jameson Young? That's the most, that's, they moved here to Jersey and we sent a transfer letter out to them. And we went to that address in Jersey, because that's what's on the transfer sheet. And they actually moved here, registered vehicles here, and all that.
So, so, Spence sent to you Jersey, you thought was class three, what it called?
He didn't get the letter and we didn't switch it, because we have to have some kind of, you know, verification that when I switch the class, that's one way or the other. So we didn't get anything. And of course, his mortgage company changed it out.
Right.
And he just didn't know, and somebody told him a couple of weeks ago, and said, you know, you got a class three on your property. And he, he didn't know what class three was, but it came here. And these don't happen very often, but it got slipped through the cracks, you know, right up here.
Now, remind us, remind us how that works? Is that a credit or is that a, for future taxes?
Yeah, big credit.
Right.
Yeah, big credit.
Okay.
I think the only thing they'll give anyone back is if you actually pay your current year taxes.
Yeah. It's a credit. Towards future.
Yes.
And how many years was that you can go back?
I thought it was three, one minute.
Well, we went back five.
Oh, that's what it is, a criteria, it allows you to go back five. That's what it is.
That's what he was, he was supposed to five. One of the things I thought, I talked to the transfer people and I said, you know, we gotta figure out some way to maybe try to catch these, but, so I think what we're gonna do to send out, I told them, when we get a transfer like this, we gotta have state address. We'll send a transfer letter to both addresses. One to the current physical address of the house, and one to the other address, just to make sure. He didn't get it. And you know that the, the mail won't forward, they won't forward any mail. They come back here, they won't forward it to him. They won't forward our ransom.
Yeah.
We get trades on them back.
Yep.
So it's just one of those things that just, you know, happens once in a while, but, you know, that's the big one over there, but.
So, but the criteria is five years you can go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was always a gray area, but that's kind of what we, that's what we do. So, but anyway, those, those files, the levers on that, and I've got the two on the up, where Jameson is on the up sheet. They all total up, if you total up all the real estate, it's kind of, goes up to $16,471.71.
All right. Well, that one, or Close Properties LLC, that de-flop, I don't know if we should give them credit or not. All right, entertain a motion. Right close.
I'm moved to accept the, what was it, 10?
16,416.71.
Yeah. For the tax exoneration.
Second officer.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And you have one consolidation of properties?
I do have just one consolidation. And that's for, uh, John Kennedy. And we have two parcels of all orders district, that's six, parcel 40 and 21. They just want to get one tax bill, so we put them consolidated together.
All right. Need a motion for the one application for consolidation of property?
To me.
Have a motion on the floor, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? I don't know. Just a rainy day ride.
Better check that thing out and see if there's personal property tax to pay.
I paid, I paid those personal property tax for six years and never wrote it. Yeah, yeah.
A question, Larry, on, on Mr. Hillary, who has a life estate.
Wait, wait, where you at?
On a tax exoneration.
Okay.
That, that property, I think, I mean, he has a life estate to that, I understand. But it's been left to the historical society for the landmarks.
Okay.
On his death.
What's the, oh?
I guess my question is, even if you leave your property to a public county entity, you, that you're still responsible for the real estate taxes.
Under a right of survival, sure?
Yes, sir.
I'm not so sure.
I, I don't think that's taxable. It's, it's owned by, it's, it's our landmarks. There is a life estate, but it's lived there, but I don't think that's property. I think it's tax controlled. I know the issue dealing with the farm might be taxing, but even then, I don't think it's taxed properly. Owned by the landmarks. Even if it's a little bit.
Yeah, I know if you are, if you have a life estate in a property, it's your responsibility to pay the taxes, not the actual owner. If you're the life estate person, it falls on that person to pay the taxes. But it is still a full commitment, you'd be taxed, but, so.
I guess we need to check into that, but I mean, um-
How far back to next?
I can go back five years, I guess, but, um, all right. Well, we'll, we'll exonerate, we'll keep it to where it is, because it's the discount for, for farm. But at the same time, I guess Larry and Anthony need to get together and check on that one.
What the exoneration was for is they didn't get the full discount for the-
Farm.
Farm.
Right.
The, the mill apart. They automatically, if it's a historical, uh, it's, we give them that automatically, but they didn't get it, that's why we don't.
So you just need to check into it further then?
Yeah, let me go look at, let me look at that.
All right. Anything else?
Several pieces of pro, hey Larry, he's got several pieces of property. I think it's gone to landmarks, so look into all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Penny, we voted on that, didn't we? We voted on that, right? The consolidation of property? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a Burke County Public Service Water District meeting on Monday. They approved the May 9th extension agreement for Boyd's Crossing, which is right down from LaFever Springs, 18 townhouses, and Whole Place at Riverside, which is next to, uh, Letterman's Campground, 214 townhouses. Approved pay application for work on the Grapevine Water Main, which is now in service. That was $150,000. And the long service line to serve the old 3M plant site in Jefferson County was denied. They just didn't want to get involved in that project. It, you know, been like a mile service line.
Right.
And they really didn't want to get involved in that, so they denied it. And that was pretty much it. Then they went to executive session and I left.
All right, um, Mr. Delia?
I have nothing to-
Mr. Whitaker?
Uh, yes, sir. This is a follow-up from last week's, I remember my notes today. So EPA meeting, we had a fifth year in a row. Kim and Bill were transit employees and maintenance of the year. That was also in the Journal, and thank the Journal for reporting that. Profit and loss for June was a strong finish in spite of COVID. They took the time to go ahead and help a few lingering items that they had in there. I guess for some purchases, I wasn't clear on what it was.
So, when you say it's finished strong even because of COVID, are you-
In the profit and loss.
That they're stronger than they were a year before?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, but as I get on down through here, the EPA gave a clear bill of site location from a tank that was on a previous location. All that's been taken care of. The, the new business, the Federal Transit Authority had some questions, I think, as far as what the ridership was, the river through June. And it was up from last year, COVID demand responses up 11,000 from fourth quarter last year to 21,000 in the fourth quarter this year. Staffing is down, they're looking for a target market for employees to, um, it's hard to compete with CDL drivers right now and trying to get the buses staffed.
Yeah, well, they, they met with us, Elaine and Nick, two weeks ago, said that, that they were getting bad on, on employment wise.
Right.
And after they left that day, they lost two more drivers. Even though they said they were gonna be optimistic and try to keep their head above and, and hoping that things would be worked out. So.
Uh, let's see. 33% to 67% that were placed for security and check.
Something for me, you're read ahead on that, if you would. On that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I have it, it should be on my, yeah, my email. They were talking about the drivers raises and administrative staff, doing a little across the board raises. And that was, that was in that meeting.
At one time, remember we was talking with Elaine and Em or Doug and, and we're talking about them trying to get benefits? I thought they'd made progress, but they didn't. So they still, I don't think anybody works there, has benefits at all. So, there's something that they need to try to figure out how to get done.
In there.
Yeah, that's one way to keep the retention on.
Yeah. The Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport Authority had a meeting, had election of officers. We had Maria, she made a motion to keep Jim Klein as chairman, and John Laub as vice chair, treasurer. Dan, you weren't there, so you got to be a treasurer. And Secretary's Maria Lawrence, and so you got ball and told on that one, sorry.
I got it.
Uh, let's see. Moved to approve the minutes of budget approval for the 20, for June 2021 was approved. We are in the process of one engine overhaul for one of the 172s for, for the training planes, for flight school. Tenant rent increased, 721 was moved to 8121, proposed one month because of the non-notification to, uh, to the tenants at that point. They want to make sure everybody got notified in time. So whoever paid for the, for the rent increase in June was moved, then it's a credit to August.
Real close to being 100% occupied.
Yes.
That's, that's a lot of huge stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of planes out there.
Coming in even on the office space, too.
Yes, yeah. Uh, the creation of the 501(c)(3) approved in June, adopted the bylaws. We, I have a copy of what they're proposing to those bylaws. This way, it will give the, uh, the airport authority a funding mechanism for donations that are given to them, whether it be for certain projects or possibly air shows, any kind of an event that will be taking place out there. There was a talk about accepting donations for the part of the area, and this is how to make that legal. Let's see. Review of the capitalization, capitalization policy, put together by the accountant and Cox Hall Day. Improved by the board, uh, just to have all the box items checked for the, as needed for the audit for the GAAP general accounting principles. We had to have that, it was nothing more than just something they had to get approved for that, for the audit. Adopted five or 457 deferred retirement plan and approved for the employees. Total takeoffs and landings were up 69%.
Oh, my gosh, that's great.
Fuel sales were down by .27%. Ab gas was up. Flight school was up by 41%. The charter is up by 8% and on the rise.
Just after that, they picked up a C-130 fueling of, what, 3,000 gallons or something?
Yeah, it was one of the first civilian C-130s that were out there, it was on Facebook, I'm, they got-
Is that right?
Yeah.
They got a good boost on that with the fuel sales. Might have got them back up into the positive side.
Yes, it's an on-field business. Grant project 39 was runway lighting project. I can tell you back a little bit. It has not, the lighting project out there on the main runway, the only runway that we have, it's, it's due for wiring upgrades because of the lightning strikes can fry a system pretty quick. And back in the 70s, when the lighting project, one of the lighting projects was done, it was done by a corporation, the Cherokee Corporation. And they actually contracted Dad to go out there to dig up and, and replace a lot of those lines out there that they had. You could tell where one of the lightning strikes had taken place because it molded some of the dirt and sandy loam soil out there into a piece of glass.
So they hired your dad to do it, he was probably out there working tobacco when he was eight years old. So they hired your dad to do it, he was probably out there working tobacco when he was eight years old?
Uh, no, but I wanted to be out there. But, um, and let's see, there's, uh, forty thousand operations that were up from last year and we actually passed the operations of Winchester Airport.
So, so, so.
We're the second busiest airport besides Morgantown. You're correct, and Jim.
So Nick's, Nick's performing well?
Yes.
So, so, uh, and I was not at that meeting because, uh, that was the last week I reported on the Main Street Martinsburg meeting that I did attend, they have them both set up at the same time. Um, which is, and is going to make it more difficult to figure that out, but, um, but, uh, um, was there a discussion in the meeting? Um, I had talked about, talked to them before the meeting about having a discussion about hiring a, um, a full-time, uh, um, full-time, uh, treasurer to be able to handle that part of it for the reporting as well?
Yes, we, um, there was a little bit of a discussion about getting, uh, about that. It wasn't anything that we decided on yet, but it was correct. I think that would be probably one of the, um, it'd be better to have them separate from the board.
Right.
Because they could give an independent, uh, analysis and audit of, of the actual financials.
That's a little different when you're running a, uh, running a budget of a couple hundred thousand and now a couple million. Um, it's a, a big difference and, and as well as the complexity of everything that's going on out there.
So a couple hundred thousand to two million in two years?
Pretty much, yeah.
And one other thing, uh, Region Nine moves out to the airport next week.
Yep, out of the, uh, office space of the, uh, the Arcadia hangar.
That's what I'm saying, that they're, uh, they're, I think they're real close to being, if not a hundred percent occupied in office space right now.
No.
Did you hire a secretary to do this, through paging of notes?
No, that'd be me.
We did receive notification that, um, the cheesecake, um, restaurant next door is having their cheesecake eating contest this Saturday. They may get permission from the city Martinsburg to shut down Stephen Street, um, for that event. So we've instructed Region Nine to bring in the movers, the wrong way down this street.
Ah, gotcha.
We don't have someone here to let them in, so we've got to be paying accordingly for that.
Good.
That's just a little additional bringing to the Martinsburg.
W B Corp also has a, a liability policy, she thought she could beat some extra, that they can, she can do it right online, she's been.
Has Alan managed to score the conference table?
In the big Region Nine conference table, one cares, uh, along the class.
Good.
So, what, what, and, and you mentioned the, the cheesecake eating. What was the, what was the benefit that they're doing that for, do you remember?
Um, yeah, Children's Home Society.
Yeah. We need to pay to have Armstead to do that, participate in that, he's been talking about it.
He was excited about it.
He is, we, we need to, we need to.
I think he'd do us proud.
Yeah.
I'll personally pitch in for his donation.
Yeah.
Each, each contestant gets a six-pound cheesecake.
We'll bring mine in later.
It looked pretty good.
We'll, we'll start bending him up. Mr. Gokena?
Six-pound cheesecake.
Good thing is, you get to take the, take it all home with you and show it. It's a contest, yeah.
Yeah, I can probably do that. Then I'll be done.
Mr. Gokena?
My landmarks committee, um, meeting was canceled. And, um, I had a fire room, um, station, Rebecca Ice Firehouse, uh, meeting yesterday.
Understand that's quite impressive building.
It's, it's very, very nice. I mean, it's, it's, it's impressive. Um, they're finishing up the brickwork now and they just set it off.
Understand the contractor doing a wonderful job.
Is, uh, I know Hunter is, uh, really pleased with the contractor. And, um, you know, at these meetings, they're, they're right up to speed. Everything is laid out in front of you. Any issues, you know, somebody jumps in and fixes or makes a phone call to, you know, to get corrected, so projects, uh, a good project. And, um, to get an opportunity to swing by there, you'll be impressed just by the facade of, of the building, very nice.
Sure, if we get a, and just a, this little side note, if we get another project that we're going to do that we're in need of SIPs panels, um, because I know there was an issue getting SIPs panels in there on that job. If we get another one, I've recently got a contact for a company out of, uh, um, out of Tennessee now that, um, does those SIPs panels as well. And boasts really good term at times.
They recently got their insulation panels that they were waiting on, now they're waiting on metal.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, always something, anything else?
No.
All right, I'm gonna skip over, uh, for, I'll, I'm gonna skip over for right now, board recommission vacancies only because we have the ambulance authority here to do their presentation, we'll do them and then we'll come bounce back to that. So Brian Costello, Director, uh, Burke County Emergency Management, and Dave Urban, the, the president of the ambulance authority here, to give us an update of what's going on with the, uh, ambulance authority. Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Ellen.
Doing well.
I'll give you just a handout, see how some talking points, that we leave here that, uh, makes us know it's that way. Uh, well, first of all, thank you for, uh, allowing us to cover for you today, just to, uh, give you an update of where we're at. Um, I can tell you that the last year and a half has been very difficult. Um, I think the challenges of COVID particularly hit the ambulance authority when you're dealing with, uh, you know, uh, first care responders, but, uh, you know, with a lot of hard work to dedicate employees. You know, I think we came out of this side stronger than we went in. And, uh, so I'll really have to report that. Uh, a couple of just numbers before you, uh, what I thought I'd do is try to give you a perspective of where we're at today and kind of where we've come over the last five years, that a lot of numbers are gonna take you back to, to two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. But, uh, if, if you look at the number of, uh, responses and, uh, transports, uh, our call volume has increased forty-eight percent over the last five years. So if you think about that, that's almost ten percent a year. So pretty dramatic, uh, increase in both, in both, uh, you know, calls or, or responses and transports. Uh, those numbers have increased from by ninety-four hundred to just under fourteen thousand last year. During the six thirty twenty, twenty-one, it just ended, uh, we had over seventy-five hundred transports. So, uh, significant number, I, I know, uh, Mr. Gokena, we were talking earlier in a meeting, and we said that when it was ten thousand, we thought that was a big number and, and you almost hit fourteen thousand last year. So, uh, certainly experiencing a lot of growth in the county. As, as a member of the board, you know, one of my, uh, biggest responsibilities is to make sure that the financial viability of the ambulance authority is intact. Um, I'm happy to tell you today that it is. Uh, if I was to kind of characterize our financial position, I would say it's very favorable. Uh, we've got a strong balance sheet, we've got good liquidity, um, and, uh, we finished the year, uh, with a net position of about eight point six million on assets of eleven million. So if, if you look at kind of like our, uh, debt to worth ratio, our, our single biggest liabilities on a building on, uh, Station Ninety-Seven is about one point nine million. Uh, very low leverage, if you look at like a debt to worth ratio, uh, I'd be about twenty-seven percent. So in banking terms, you know, we, we call that board proof, low leverage. Uh, the companies that really, uh, came out of the, uh, two thousand eight recession were the ones that were, uh, had very low leverage and had good liquidity, that's where we're at. Uh, we've got current assets of just under five million, uh, we've got the rainy day fund of about seven hundred twenty-two thousand. That represents about fifteen percent of our operating budget before capital expenditures. Uh, probably at next month's meeting, we'll, we'll probably push that up to about eighteen percent. So, uh, we do have good liquidity, we've got strong balance sheet, and, uh, I, I can tell you today that we're, we're in a good financial position.
And, and all the equipment and buildings is better than it's ever been?
Yeah, and I'll talk a little bit about that, because we have made some significant investments in, you know, both, uh, facilities, uh, equipment and, and mostly in our rolling stock. You know, in, in terms of, if you're looking at the, the budget from, you know, uh, uh, income and expenses or revenue and expenses, um, you know, revenues increased thirty percent over that same period. Uh, we've run our revenue from four point four million to about five point seven million. Uh, we did finish the year, last year, uh, with a net positive cash flow, and that's excluding the CARES money. So we did get money as a result of, uh, the CARES Act. And so, uh, you know, and that way kind of scorched your balance sheet because, you know, that's a one-time gift, so to speak. And, uh, while it was very well appreciated, we're glad to be, be, uh, we're able to receive those funds. We're not gonna get that in years going forward, so we kind of eliminate that in terms of looking at our performance because we don't want that to distort our balance sheet. You know, just kind of looking, uh, you know, you talk about some of the investments, Mr. Gokena, over, um, over the last five years, we've made about seven point two million in capital improvements, or, you know, I think capital expenditures. Uh, the first line item there is the ambulances, we've, we've put about one point nine million dollars in the ambulances over the last five years. Um, when I came on board just about seven years ago, one of the things that, um, we faced in looking kind of strategically, we're looking at five years, is, um, we had a fleet of ambulances that was aging and had a lot of miles. We, we were running ambulances that had a hundred and eighty thousand miles. Not an ideal situation, you know, when you're in an emergency type situation, you're trying to get some in the hospital. So we knew that one of our biggest priorities was to upgrade our fleet of ambulances, but we can do it that. Uh, we bought six brand-new ambulances, I can tell you, uh, Jim, you might remember, about seven years ago, an ambulance cost about a hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, you know, by the time the wheel sits the road, you, you, you could put it in service. Today, that same cost is about two hundred and fifty thousand.
And I'm thinking ten years ago was right around a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, because in two thousand and one, or two thousand and two, me, um, Charlie, Charlie Hall and Peanut drove down to, right outside of, um, Asheville, North Carolina, and picked up two ambulances and drove them back. And I think that price tag on those was about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars now. And that was in two thousand one, two thousand two.
Now, now, some of that, uh, there's some federal regulations that have required some additional improvements, we'll say, uh, some safety features. Um, they're bigger, uh, carry more equipment, uh, we certainly have more capabilities on those ambulances than we ever have. Um, but, but there's a price that comes with that, and we've invested in that, and that's, uh, you know, so I, I can tell you today that our fleet is up to date. Um, in addition to that, we've got about five support vehicles.
It's hard to put a price on life.
Well said, yeah.
So what do you do with the support vehicles?
Uh, that's for like, uh, the chief, uh, uh, the, the director, I mean, oftentimes, he might respond up, but just, uh, just supervisory calls are made.
I'm sorry, what was the question, sir?
What do you do with the support vehicles?
Support vehicles, well, we currently, our chief and myself have vehicles, our deputy chief for, you know, because usually we get calls twenty-four seven to get out, you know, uh, be personally, these guys, we monitor radio traffic. If things are going on, we get out there. Then we have a backup vehicle that our train officer uses and rotates with the on-duty supervisor. We have a supervisor that, uh, backfills and covers our, our staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So that's what those.
Uh, our, our biggest expenditures, Ben, and if you might imagine, in facilities, uh, buildings, three point five million. Uh, the biggest chunk of that, probably about two point four, two point five, is in the development of Station Ninety-Seven, which is our central station, and what we kind of call our campus, we have our, uh, some administrative facilities there. Um, that building, while it's very expensive, uh, we think that's gonna meet our needs for probably easily the next fifteen to twenty years. Uh, we put in a training room, it's got some really nice features, uh, we can certainly grow there. We, we currently run, uh, at times, two shifts out of there, but we could actually add a, add an additional shift if needed. So, uh, that building is poised for growth for quite some time.
The good thing is, when you built that station, uh, today's cost will probably be thirty-five to forty percent more. So you hit that perfectly.
Yeah, easily, yeah.
Yeah, I did, um, how is the, um, ingress egress onto Route Eleven there, some, at times of emergency?
I'll actually let Brian, he'd probably get it better than I could.
Uh, the biggest thing that we had, and, uh, Councilor, don't get me to understand that, is that right there in front of the electrical place is heavy vegetation. Um, I know he's going out on his own and he cleared that out at, at times. Yeah, that seems to be the big thing, is people coming north, not seeing a unit there. So our people are aware of that, I think moving forward, we at some point will probably need to get with Department of Highways and talk about putting some sort of.
Lighting signs.
Some sort of identification, you know, feature there.
We have that at the north station, correct?
You know, that, and that may be a good place to talk to the sheriff about putting that sign up that traffics, because the traffic comes through there, a lot of the times, traffic coming through there is, is going well over the posted forty mile an hour speed.
Risk.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, it, that road with visibility, I'm sure, didn't have all them trees in it and bushes in it right all along the road when the Department of Highways okayed that. And that may be a good conversation with Department of Highways about them and, and their right-of-way distance because I'm sure they approve that without those there. I mean, we keep trimming them back and the highway department just came through not too long ago with their, um, brush mower and knocked them back a little bit, but they should probably be taken completely out.
That's definitely a conversation, we can, uh, we can start from our end and talk with them about it. And, and like I said, find out also about whatever safety features are available to us there. Because anything we can do to reduce the risk is always very important.
I know that, uh, delegate overintended at the time, I think he was instrumental in getting the lighted signs or the flashing signs up at the north station. So maybe we can get with our delegation to do something here at the south station, or mid, mid-station.
We're definitely gonna need those at, uh, New Baker Heights.
There as well as in Wood.
Yeah.
So, okay.
All right.
Uh, just to kind of finish that, all on, on the buildings, uh, we have put, uh, or will have put about a half million into Station Ninety-eight, which is our southern station, uh, near Route Eleven. If you've driven by recently, you've seen some of the siding going up. Uh, one, just the interesting little footnotes there is when I came on board, one of the things they showed me is that we pulled an ambulance entrance at the door. You couldn't open the door to, to clean it, to, uh, to, uh, to replenish the materials or, you know, get ready for that strip. And so we've had to expand that, and so while we're doing that, we've done some other things to make that property a little bit nicer. Uh, well, ultimately, we'll add a second crew there as well. I know that, uh, you know, again, kind of going back to our conversation with the folks at Back Creek, uh, we're committed to expanding service in that, in that area, but not at the expense of, of, you know, enlarging that, uh, that, uh, that circle of service, so to speak. And so we'll end up putting another, uh, unit there in, in the south station. So it'll be ready for us when that, when the time comes, so that, uh, you know, we're meeting all the needs and folks and getting. Uh, and then lastly, the equipment, we've got about one point six million in equipment. And again, this is something that Brian could probably comment on a lot more than I do because he knows all the technical pieces of it. But, you know, one thing I'll say is that as technology has increased, uh, the equipment that we have on board is significantly improved from what it was maybe just ten years ago. Maybe you might just want to talk about like Lucas devices and.
Sure.
Heart monitors, and, and we've got a number of things that we now carry on these ambulances that we just never had before that are truly lifesaving pieces of equipment. So, you want to comment on that?
Sure. Um, this past year has been a very, uh, very expensive year for this equipment. We, we purchased Lucas devices two years ago, which automated CPR devices. If you guys know, you, that conversation with our firefighters who would be dispatched to cardiac arrest and pull a firefighter off and help a CPR, drive a unit, whatever. What this Lucas device does is takes the place of that firefighter EMS provider that would normally be doing CPR. It does quality CPR while our human would get tired. Uh, the data shows us that within two minutes of doing CPR, you're probably not, you know, effectively, this machine doesn't get tired. It can do CPR for forty-five minutes without changing battery. So it gives us what we need to provide some lifesaving stuff. We also just recently purchased ten CPAD vents that, uh, our guys are currently writing the state protocol for the use of vent patients, which now again, you're replacing another human that's going to provide breathing for a cardiac arrest patient. This vent will do that, so now you have a machine doing CPR, you have a machine doing the ventilations. Now that most providers is pushing medications and managing their patients instead of trying to be an octopus and do so many things at once. But, uh, some of our costs are upgraded radio systems into the unions, both cordials and mobile radios. Uh, gear, safety gear, you know, safety gear, as Councilor Gokena can attest to, has a life expectancy. So we had to replace some of that safety gear, and, uh, those kind of things. Pagers, um, technology, uh, an air track system, which is a video otorhinister, because you have to innovate a patient, which means you're gonna take over their breathing. You have to make sure that that tube gets down into their, uh, windpipe, okay? Not in the esophagus, but where it needs to be. And this allows you to visually see where you're placing that tube so that you get it right the first time. And you don't realize it when you're pumping air into a stomach, because put air into a stomach, air has to come out, so.
If you guys want a demonstration, Brian. If you guys want a demonstration, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, I think Board Member McGinnis and Bill Pope has had some demonstrations over the last year.
There you go. And one of the other biggest items, of course, is your cardiac model. You're talking about a cardiac model, $14,000.
How many leads? 16 leads? Is that what the?
That, that's usually 12 leads. But then you take, you can take those 12 leads and put them other places and get a broader picture of the heart. But anyway, it's not going to get any cheaper. The expectations of us at the pre-hospital side isn't going to get any less. The good thing is, is that we're still working with legislation above to say, hey, we have to come up with some more revenue sources. We need to have ways of going out here, as David said, 13,000, almost 14,000 calls, but only 51 to 52% transports. The only way we can pay is if we transport that person to the hospital. So as I told David, the other thing is, is our revenue recovery on the billing side. You do $5.7 million worth of business, but you only recover about 2.7 of that because of your contractual allowances with your insurance companies, portions that are patient pays that may or may not pay. Those things happen. So just, I tell you this, imagine this, going into a grocery, you're a grocery store owner, you go to the store, he comes to you registered, $500 worth of product, but the law says he only has to give you 250. You're not going to be in business for a long time, right? And that's where really where we're at. You're providing $5 million worth of service. So that's why the ambulance fee is so important, because it's to stop the.
How's that doing for you, the ambulance fee?
We are, I want to let David talk a little bit more about it, because I'm very basic. He's more technical on the monetary piece of it. But I believe, based on where we are the service provided, we're right at that process. What we're giving away due to contractual allowance and non-payment is just being maybe a little less big rate up by our ambulance fee. And you figure that ambulance fee hasn't been raised in 10 years. So we've done a lot.
Just to give you some perspective, about 10 years ago, the ambulance fee represented about 60% of our total budget. You probably remember that. 2017, it was 55%. 2021, it was 44%. So, you know, we're all familiar with inflation. And you know the Federal Reserve says it's transitory. I think we learned in the Federal Open Market Committee this week that transitory now means that it's going to go up and stop and not come back down. So, you know, prices have gone up, we're familiar with inflation, the fees kind of remain the same for 10 years. And so what's happened is that represents a smaller part of our budget, and that's squeezing our bottom line. So that's kind of the basic. Our single biggest challenge right now is finding paramedics. There's a nationwide shortage of paramedics. There's a number of reasons for that. Chad in Britain or even Brian could tell you far more than I could. But, you know, in a nutshell, that when COVID came, a lot of people who were kind of on the fence or thinking about getting out, got out. So we lost a lot of paramedics during COVID. We have a situation that's not unlike Berkeley County schools, where we've got folks that live here, we love to work here, but those dollars from across the border, you know, whether it's Loudoun County or Fairfax County, they look at what they can make if they can just drive, you know, two days a week, drive an hour, hour and a half, you know, they can make significant amount more. So we're competing with that, and we've lost folks to that. I will say that for a period of time, we were behind the curve as far as salaries. I think we're right where we need to be. We're certainly not ahead of the curve, but we're right where we should be. But probably to our detriment, if I was to criticize myself, we didn't raise salaries fast enough, and we probably lost some people there that went to higher-paid jobs. I would say to the credit of the county council, the one thing that probably keeps people here is our benefit package. I think our benefit package, and that's through the county, is second to none. I mean, when we sit down with folks and we compare our benefits to where you're going, our stack up at the very top. And so our benefit package is good. So if you're an older fellow like myself with gray hair, no hair, you love the benefits, you know, because you're getting used to, you're close to using them, right?
You need them, right?
But if you're a younger baby or a gentleman, you're looking a little bit more at what you can put in your pocket because you want to buy a mortgage or maybe a new car. And so, you know, we fight that battle. We've almost got like two sets of employees. We've got the older employees who really value the benefits, the younger employees not so much. I mean, our retirement system's great, but they're not thinking about retirement in their 20s and 30s. But our single biggest challenge is personnel and paramedics. Just to give you a few numbers, let's see here, our total cost for salaries and benefits, it's increased 44% over five years from $2.9 million to $4.4 million. Our salaries and benefit package in 2021 represented almost 82% of our total expenditures. So when you think about that, I mean, that's huge. And that's, you know, a move in personnel moves everything. And so if you think about how, you know, revenue's going 30%, but, you know, the cost of employees is running 44%, it's just unsustainable, you know? And so we're seeing not far down the road where we're going to have to change that dynamic. I think Brian and the administrative staff have, for lack of a better word, milked everything we can out of the insurances. And he went back and found a way through the Safe Harbor Act to actually build for more. And so that way saved us. But we've kind of reached the limits of that. So I guess in a little bit of a long-winded way, what we're saying is, you know, before long, we'll have to come before the county council and talk about increasing that user fee to kind of supplement some of these expenses up.
Right. And for the record, I mean, actually, what the ambulance authority is billing out on the billing side is above and beyond what it takes to have the user fee. The user fee is there to pay for the facilities and get the ambulances and stuff like that. But the, and I like that system because it's the ones that use it are the ones that's paying for it. And typically, the same thing as anything else, the insurance companies are the ones that's paying for that service. We all pay dearly for health insurance. We all pay, you know, dearly for everything that we get. But, and that's why there's two sections, two parts of revenue coming from the ambulance story, the billing side and the fees.
Yeah, we have restricted funds and unrestricted, and certainly restricted funds goes specifically for those assets. And I mentioned, like I said, we have invested heavily in, you know, equipment and facilities and personnel. And I think we are where we need to be. But as I heard you discussing this morning, the county continues to grow, and what we're looking at is down the road, continuing to grow, how do we meet that demand? And, you know, like the next capital project we'll do for facilities will probably be expand the northern side. And then, you know, there's talk about going out toward the woods. And then, you know, we're in a very fortunate position where like Berkeley County Fire allows us to, you know, partner with volunteer companies. And so we're going to hedge this bill basically at no cost. And our busiest stations, actually 49, the Midland Industrial Park, we have a small presence there just because it's a small facility. But again, at very little cost to us, we're able to reach a significant number of residents just because of location. But at some point, we'll probably have to expand that just because that is our busiest station.
And that's, that's all coming from not Berkeley Fire, but it's the volunteer fire stations and the fire boards. It's a great relationship.
It's a very good partnership. And we've been very fortunate to benefit from.
Right, right.
But I want more of your bunch of numbers. I just wanted to give you kind of paint the picture for you, give you a feel for what we're at. Certainly, welcome any questions or.
I think one of the things, Mr. Irvin, is that we talk about it, there's times when every one of our ambulances is out, every, there's times when ours is all out, the city of Martinburg's out. One of the things that we've been talking about is redundancy, being able to have more available ambulances. And that's the one thing that we're really focusing on in the board right now is, in the very near future, which we're talking about, we've already made the commitment to Back Creek Valley, right? We've, along with that, we are putting another second crew into South Berkeley. But that's going to happen more and more as we go along. And that's why we're going to end up having to look at increasing the fee itself. Because we, you know, our commitment to the people is to make sure we have the facilities, we have the staff, we have the ambulance to make that call. And that's, we're pushing that right, right at the edge.
Yeah, we, again, we're very fortunate that we have some good mutual aid partners or mutual aid agreements in place with, whether it be surrounding counties or with the city of Martinburg. But there are often times where our folks are completely dispatched, and we can't get the next call, and someone's backing up for us. Now, we do that for them too.
Right.
But to your point, I mean, we're, what's the term you use, Chad, as far as we're level zero? But there's times we just, we can't meet the next call, and someone else has to step in our place. And we'd really rather not be in that position. We'd rather make that call ourselves.
Right.
We do want to build some more redundancy into the system. And it's just going to take time and money, and, you know, but we're getting there.
I think we talked about this whole situation a few months ago. When we were in COVID, we talked about the, an ambulance being taken out of service, where we were going to be if that, that number hit wrong, which could very well have happened because of the limited amount that you had to work with.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It was one of the things I was talking with Mr. Irvin about this morning. You had asked that question. I said, no, I don't want to smoke up your tail, but I'll get back with you. I think I did. But that's where we're at now, is as Mr. Cope said, we're looking at January 2022, if we can get there on the expansion. Two things that really put that on there, personnel, because you have to put blood in that seat to make that pain not want a piece of equipment go down the road. And then again, you're having to expand your fleet, because if you're putting seven pieces of equipment on the road, you have to have some sort of rotational unit or something that the last thing we would want is eight or nine pieces of equipment on the road, four go down, and now all of a sudden you're cutting your services because you don't have the equipment to backfill. So those are some of the things as you look at it. And I tell you, it's very dynamic, it's never-ending, and we're just keeping our nose to the ground, keep figuring out what the data tells us, because we date them out a lot on what's going on.
So, so should we be, should we be having conversations with our legislators about additional things that can happen to benefit? I know you guys were able to sustain, and you talked about removing the numbers from 60 to 40% off of the, off of the fee. And I'm assuming the only reason that you're able to survive under the ambulance fee.
44%.
Yeah, ambulance fee paying the 44% now as opposed to the level it was before. And that's because of the billing that you're allowed to do. So is there, is there something that legislature could look at to allow you to do a little differently that we should be talking to legislators when we're trying to get things changed in the state capital?
Well, I think what you look at is a lot of this is going to be done at the national level unless you're just focused on a state, if you're just going to focus on the state Medicaid program or something like that. One of the things that's really one at the national level, at the medicator side, which really dictates insurance industry alive, is to create a treat-in-place payment, okay? That's where we go out, treat the patient in the home, and leave them there.
Right.
Okay? That can change a whole different dynamic for us if that gets through, because that's revenues that you're recovering on calls that you can't afford now. The other thing is, is that allows us to look at, you've heard us talking fast about community paramedic. But right now, the state is really tidied up to so much regulatory stuff as far as what our providers need to be, that it's not cost-effective because there's no revenue stream. I mean, it could be a half a million dollar expense with no return. So we've, we're going to sit down at some point and sit with our medical director, Dr. Mike Lautner, talk about what the hospital wants to do, because there's things that the hospital wants us to be a part of. But he has reassured us that what you want also comes with a price tag. And that seems to be the hurdle, is they want assistance, but they want it like, you're part of us, we want it free. We are part of a team, but we still have expenses.
So, so I can see where, I can see where this post-COVID, this COVID mentality that we've been in, as well as new viruses coming out, what's a new one, the Delta virus. So if you're, if you're, if you're looking at those type of services where you really don't want to take everybody to the hospital, you want to go ahead and treat them. I think there's a really good argument on a national level to try to get some of those changed. And maybe, maybe what we should be doing is, is having that conversation with some of our senators and congressmen.
Well, it's not a new, it's not a new concept. I mean, it's been around for about five years now.
But it's more important now, if you look at what's going on.
Just to give you a number to throw out there, you know, COVID hit here on the, I think ours was on the 20th or 24th of March of 2020. In April, we ran over 892 calls in 2020, of which we only transported 432 patients because they didn't want to go to the hospital. If you're saying that I'm not dying, then I'm staying here with your mentality.
Right.
So you're talking about an increased, you know, work demand with a decreased return. So I hate to make healthcare just now a business.
No, 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 but I totally, I totally understand what you're saying.
You got to bounce the books.
That's it.
But it, but it does make sense, it does make sense, just what you said, to be able to change that, that, that operational procedure to say, we're, now we're treating, now we're coming out and taking care of, you know, a larger percentage in their home than we ever did before because these things have happened. And if you can connect the two, I think there's a good argument at a, at a national level.
It allows us to get into preventative medicine as well, because how many patients see their physician in an ER, are told, go get these meds, you know, whether it be steroids or whatever for breathing difficulties, and no one follows up? They come back two or three days later, where you just saw Dr. Smith, he issued disc, and you go, I know, I couldn't get to the pharmacy to get my meds. So if you create a community involvement program that allows a certain type of provider to get to follow up within that 24-hour period, much like the, you see with community corrections going on with their people, you have a person that can follow up with it, maybe that's part of that continuing care, making sure that that patient gets their meds, is taking their meds, and following the doctor's advice.
Compliance piece of it.
Correct. That prevents that return visit.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against fee increases, but it doesn't sound like that fee increase is going to solve the problem. When you look in that expansion and everything, it sounds like you're going to need a little more than a fee increase to be able to.
The biggest challenge is, quite frankly, is that if the caring was to stop growing, we'd be okay.
Well, no, I mean, if the county, if the county grows, everything has to grow with it. I mean, the infrastructure has to grow with it, the houses have to grow with it. I mean, everything grows along with it at a pace. But, but so does your fee, because the more it grows, you get more, you get more money from the growth of it as well. But, but it just sounds like it's a different world now, and you're, you're spending more time not transporting and spending more time doing a service in home, then there needs to be something. If there's a change in the health, the way healthcare is.
You kind of hit the nail on the head in that. COVID did change things, because every month in our board meetings, and it's kind of funny to be in this offense, but usually I'm asking the questions. But, you know, we're asking our folks, like, you know, why are, why are the percentages going down of transports compared to responses? And, you know, we're, we're looking at that pretty hard standard for more than we can do. And even though we have a record number of transports that were 7,500, you know, the percentage is going down compared to calls. And so what kind of found out is that kind of, just like there's, I guess, vaccine hesitancy, there's that hesitancy to go to the hospital. And it's like, I don't feel good, I want to get checked out. It's called the ambulance, but as long as they tell me I'm not dying, I'm going to stay here.
Well, and I get it. I say, I say the same thing all the time. People go to the hospital and die. So I don't, I don't want to go there, you know?
So I think your point's well made. It's a multi-pronged approach. We need to work on revenue sources. We'll have to look at maybe increasing the fee. And we're going to have to look at taking a bigger bite out of the insurance piece of it. So it's a multi-pronged approach.
Yeah, but we, I think we should have another conversation about, you know, about the, the numbers on what we're doing now as in-home and not transporting, that type of thing, and get as much information as we can to be able to have those conversations with, you know, Manchin, Capdo, Mooney, those guys, and, and let them know our, our thought process. I'm sure everybody's seen the same thing. So they got to be, they've got to be seeing it from other, other parts of the country as well.
Yeah, I came on board, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I came on board in July 2014, and we spent three years down in DC, off and on with those guys, trying to create the safe harbor. As you know, with our, with our ambulance fee, we were not billing at all for BLS. And that's because of the way the law was written, the anti-cakeback statute. So we worked with Congress to say, hey, we have to have an exemption, they call it safe harbor, that we can bill insurances to recover somebody on these calls, but not have to bill our clients, our citizens, to maintain our and maintain our, you know, our commitment to them. And it took three years and finally late twenty-seventeen, early twenty-eighteen, they created that safe harbor and they limited it to government entities like ourself. If a private organization were to come in here and perform this job, they would not be afforded that opportunity. So that was one thing that we were able to do. And I mean, that captured about another four hundred forty-two thousand dollars a year that we were giving away. So that definitely, so if people want to know how were we able to save it all for that ten years is that Mr. Irvin said, we figured out where the money was and then we had to create a plan to go get it. I'm here to tell you, I think when we're down to the bone, I'm seeing skeletons right now.
Right. Oh, it sounds like it needs to be moved to the next level.
What's your current collection rate, not only on the fee, but on services?
Okay, you're on your, your collection on fees. We'll start here. Um, usually you see first time through about eighty-five percent. And then as you get into the penalty phases with the base plus the extra day you get off penalties, you will collect over the last five years, we've collected anywhere between ninety-eight percent and a hundred and one percent of what the base would be. So when I say base, I'm saying, okay, we've got forty-six. Yeah, if we have forty-six thousand homes multiplied by sixty, we would expect to get this much money. By the end, you usually have about fifteen percent. Three years ago, we did have a rather unusual low. There was a twenty percent that didn't pack. So we only recovered about eighty, eighty-one percent. But now we're back up to that, uh, first time collection around the ninety percent range. And when you look at the whole dollar amount, about ninety percent of what you anticipated.
That's because the later you pay, the higher the fee is. And that was done because if you want to do that, then, then we're, at the end of the day, we got to be close to a hundred percent.
Uh, I mean, that's, I think that's, you know, really a good number. I'm pleased that it's that high.
On the, on the, on the insurance side, it's a whole different story. Um, I gave you the numbers earlier. The percentages are this. You, you'll bill your services and you'll collect from your insurance industry about fifty-one percent of what you do. Uh, you'll have about a half to one percent that goes to bad debt, which is either, you know, people, uh, bankruptcies and things like that, or people who love the property but can't pay. Uh, you'll have, right now we have about nine hundred seventy-eight thousand that's outstanding for the last fiscal year, which is nice. And then twenty-six to thirty percent will be your contractual write-off with insurance companies.
So that's where it's at. That's where the money is at. That's where the money is being left on the table is with the insurance companies.
Yes.
Correct. They're, they're, they set the base and then.
They either don't pay.
That's the problem. They're setting the base.
They'll either tell you, we won't pay you because you're not an authorized provider, or you have to agree to be an authorized provider and accept this for your services. As everyone knows, Medicare hasn't had an increase in almost seventeen years now. So.
And that's the biggest problem.
That, that's a big thing because really they're the industry standard. When they do something, usually the other place is public. Yeah.
Dave, when you was talking about sixty percent versus forty-four percent, was you basing that on a five point seven million dollar year?
Just strictly as a percentage of gross revenue each year.
Five point seven. So, so just on the fee side alone, going from sixty to forty-four percent, I'll do some quick math. It's nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars difference.
Well, I'm sure that fee has grown over those same period of time though.
Yeah. So its number of homes has grown.
Right. The, the amount has grown.
Right.
Continue to grow. Yeah.
Right. But, and, and then the other thing that the ambulance authority should, and the council need to look at, it's unlike the fire. The ambulance authority doesn't bill businesses. And, 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 you know, we all know every business calls an ambulance.
Well, there's, there's more people working here now from out of the area.
Absolutely.
There aren't residents. They're probably eight times four.
I mean, you got, I was just use this, for example, Macy's, five thousand something employees and they're busting on it for everywhere.
And we're calling out there to a lot.
Right. So, and, and, and the residents are paying for that. So I think that's where we really need to look at. And the fire board has all that information. They have square footage and everything.
There's really a game changer if you can build businesses.
Yeah. Does, does your current ordinance allow for that?
It does not.
That would have to be changed through us. That's, yeah.
And then I think once you do that, you also have to have a fee structure in mind and how you want to assess the cost to those businesses.
What's for employee, what's for food?
No, right. And, and we're, yeah, the fires, the chairman of the fire board is looking at that right now. So just had that conversation last night.
And you just, you hate to, you know, to have to go back to the residents, especially the elderly. You know, because I think there's, I think there's around seven thousand families that are on homestead exemption here. So, I mean, they're already having a tough time living in Berkeley County. We suppose the cost of living is short.
Yeah, we, uh, we interface with them on a regular basis to try to make sure that anybody who's in the poverty level, that we can give them the elaborations and conditions for that, uh, the state, if they're going to allow this.
All right.
Other questions or? I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for support. Uh, we've had a good relationship and the county council, I think, are supportive and pretty much appreciative. You know, to summarize, I think we're in a good financial position. Just wanted to emphasize the challenges ahead. Uh, we have a good group of employees and, uh, we're looking forward to another big year. So if you have any questions afterwards, I'd be happy to entertain you, anything, anyone personally.
I, I'd just like to make a comment. You know, I know that, uh, Chief Weinbrunner and Deputy Chief Vowert have worked extremely hard during the COVID time to get the policies and procedures, protocols, not at their own department. But you also assisted every volunteer fire department, assisted Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, assisted Berkeley County Fire Employee and played a pivotal role in communicating with the health department, working with the city of Martinsburg. You know, that was, that was all very critical time, uh, for the health and wellbeing of those providing the services. And I would also want to go on and say that the staff, uh, you have a very highly skilled staff that's in the field. I've seen them work many, many times and, uh, they, they do some very, very good work. You know, your board, you know, with your leadership, you know, your, your board, I think is very healthy. And, um, you guys are doing good work. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the county comments and thank you for your support.
Well, I also want to mention, Chief Weinbrunner is now a member of the Region Nine Planning and Development Council. Uh, he hasn't been to a meeting yet, but I expect him.
He's going to have one.
Well, that's.
Make that clear, right?
But you have a member on the Region Nine, which is Berkeley, Morgan and Jefferson County Planning Commission. And I expect great things from them.
Uh, I'm going to echo, um, what, um, Councilperson Gokunhar said. I think, um, ten and a half years I got on the board, um, and, um, from where we were then and where we are today, staff, uh, staff-wise and board members, I, I think we're very strong. Um, and we just need to continue to build upon that. And, and, and as you know, you're doing it now. Um, Mr. President, you're, you, you've got a committee formed to, where are we going from here? You know, what, what do we have to look forward to? What we got to be, uh, prepared for? Um, are we going to be able to meet the demand? And so that's, that committee was formed about a month, or two months ago now.
Two months ago.
And, uh, and starting to dig into that. So they want to be out in front of the curve. And, uh, I know the fire side is doing the same thing. So there's a, a lot of moving parts. And, um, thank you for your time and dedication to everybody.
Thank you.
All right. If we can, I see, uh, Mr. Chris Jones is in the audience for his interview that we're running behind. If we can do that before we take break, um, like to do that. So.
You're jumping all over the boards there.
We are. You're, you're dragging me on. You're, you're getting me behind schedule here. So, um, let's go ahead and, um, take, um, Board and Commission interview with Chris Jones, candidate for Berkeley County Parks and Rec, sir, if you can come forward. This is going to be fun, me on this side and you on that side. But, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, Chris, and, and why you want to serve on the, on Parks and Rec, please.
Well, it's, uh, as you've heard, my name is Chris Jones. Uh, I grew up in Berkeley County. I've been here thirty-eight years. Moved here when I was, well, thirty-seven. Moved here when I was eight. And, um, I've been at the lead pastor of Hope Community Church there in Hedgesville for the last four years, four, five years maybe. I've been on staff there twenty-one years. Married almost twenty-five years. My little daughter just graduated, uh, WBU with civil engineering degree and working in Ashburn. Little daughter's getting married next Saturday.
She has an engineering degree?
Yeah.
Oh, did you hear that, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, I did. Well, I'd like to give this her contact information. She would like to that community. There you go. Um, so yeah, Berkeley County, I've been part of Berkeley County my whole life. We live in the Hedgesville area and, um, it's a good opportunity to get back.
Yeah. Well, Chris does a wonderful job at, uh, Hope, uh, Community, uh, Church and, um, and I've gotten to know Chris over the last several years and, um, um, is huge in the community. Um, has done a wonderful job in raising his three children and, and very much, uh, youth, uh, oriented. So, Mr. Barnard, do you have any question for Mr. Jones?
Well, this is a good time to, to, to think about getting on Parks and Rec. The, you know, the mission is really changing. Of course Eddie can get more into that because he's the, he's our, uh, member. But what do you, what would you plan for Parks and Rec if you got on there? Do you have any plans or do you, any areas of emphasis or anything like that?
I think personality wise, I'm a builder. Uh, I don't think, I don't like things to stay the same size. I don't, I don't like things to stay, stay the same. And so, uh, anything I'm a part of, uh, we build and, uh, provide more opportunities and provide more, um, space and all those type of things. So, um, aside from being a pastor, is what I've done for the last twenty-five years. And we just added a new nice addition under our church. And so it's, uh, it's kind of in me to do those type of things. So. I don't, uh, I don't like status quo. I don't like things that just kind of flounder and stay where they are. So I think improvement, uh, there's always room for improvement. And, um, I'm sure Parks and Rec isn't immune to that. I'm sure there's room for improvement in everything we do. So it's like, we did an opportunity to maybe look into that.
Mr. Delia.
I think that's a very healthy statement you just said. I, I, I think that if, uh, if you're sitting on a board or you're, um, trying to serve your community, you're not doing what you can if you don't look for ways to improve everything that, um, you can put your hands on. Uh, sometimes people don't like that, um, because change is tough. But sometimes you have to, sometimes you have to overlook that aspect of it and move forward and continue to do what you think is best. And I, I really, um, I really like that, that attitude, thought process, whatever, uh, whatever it is coming from. The, uh, have you ever, have you ever been, uh, involved in anything with the Parks and Rec before?
My kids play soccer through Parks and Rec. Transitioning out of age group now, but we were part of that whole system, soccer system years ago. So that's, that's more or less my, uh, you know, except going to War Memorial Lambert when I was a kid.
Do you live in Martinsburg area?
We live, uh, on the Ridge, on Ridge Road there between.
You ever been to Fort Park, Fort House Park?
Played a lot of soccer at Fort House Park, yeah.
It's a really nice, nice park right now. Um, I got, the thing that also ties in, uh, I think a lot is being the pastor of the church and having all these youth programs. Tell us a little about your youth programs.
I thought it was my turn.
Well, I'm asking, I'm, hey, I'm the president. I can jump in anytime long. But, but before he, before he answers that.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll catch up.
Coming from Mr. Delia this morning, earlier before you got here, uh, Chris, we, we spoke about how the airport authority has went from two hundred thousand dollars a year budget to two million dollar budget in two years.
Yeah.
And that builds on what you just said to Mr. Barnard about your, uh, you don't like the status quo, where you can always do better.
Our mentality, I mean, I've been at the church twenty-two, almost, well, twenty-five years altogether on staff, twenty-one, twenty-two of those years. And I remember those forty people there. Um, we have multiple locations now. I've worked with the same people twenty years. A lot of the guys on the board have been with me twenty years on that board. And, uh, it's a constant mindset of, of self-examination, figuring out what, what the reality is and where we are. And then figuring out what needs to change in order to get to where we want to go. And that's a non-stop process. And, and so we have a system set in place there that, um, I, I just had breakfast with a guy this morning that reviews my servants. So if I say something crazy, he's going to tell me. So we, we just build in those mechanisms that keep us moving forward. And there, there's not very many excuses accepted about why that can't happen. So change is a part of that consistently. And, and then, uh, working as a team, which I think Mr. Krieger would agree, uh, being part of some of the projects that we've done out there. We are team oriented and, and I'm that type of leader where I want as much input as I could get, uh, in order to make the right decisions. So, um, so it's working so far.
So, so your, your, your congregation, I'm, I'm guessing is, is, uh, a large part of the Back Creek Valley area. What's, what's the, what's the, uh, what's Parks and Rec look like in the Back Creek Alley and, or Alley, Back Creek Valley?
The alley over there?
Back Creek Valley in the future. What's the, you know, is there, has there been any thought process of, of, um, because there's really no parks back there. Funny thing is, we were, um, side note, we were looking at, uh, in the, in the planning, which Eddie missed the, the last one, we were looking at all the parks that were, um, listed. And the one that, uh, what's the little one back there that never got deeded over?
Rudy Park.
Rudy Park is, is listed on there. We were like, yeah, that's not even a park. Um, but, so, so what's it look like in your mind in, in the Back Creek Valley of the future?
I think access is important. I mean, I guess Fort House Farm would be the closest thing to Back Creek Valley that, um, so I think, I think access for kids is, is a huge deal. And, um, access takes space, takes land, takes buildings, takes all those type of things. It's people run those programs. And, and so, uh, Back Creek Valley is growing quickly on, on that side, even if you come just a little bit, uh, east of Back Creek Valley, which will still be considered Hedgesville area, uh, you know, right across from Martins. You know, back Route nine, Route seven. That's a lot of growth back there. And for those kids to be involved in a Parks and Rec program, a lot of times will mean that they have to drive all the way to Dupont to play. Especially soccer and things like that, which my kids did. Now it wasn't very far for us. But you, you talk about somebody that lives over in the Shanghai area, they're going to have to, you know, they're going to have to make a decent trip over to Inwood or to, or to Fort House or to play soccer all the way over there if you want.
And I was surprised we had, when we had the town hall meeting over there, um, in, uh,
Tomahawk.
In Tomahawk, we're in there. They, uh, there was, uh, there was, and, and it was mostly an older crowd at that. But they were still concerned with recreation in that area. Matter of fact, somebody suggested, why is there not a bike path running down Route seven? Now I think that'd be a little crazy because that, that road is a little crazy in itself. But, but, but the thought process was there about something for them to do, which is, uh, um, which is a good, a good concept as well. So, no, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you applying for the position.
If you want to see the growth that's happening, uh, in the Hedgesville area, just try to go, go out Route nine at five o'clock in the evening and, or travel, drive, run road and nine oh one. I mean, those arteries are, they're, 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 they're flowing like crazy.
And in Back Creek Valley, it's not, I mean, our church is a, is a microcosm of what Back Creek Valley looks like. We have a multi-generational church. We have a whole pile of kids all the way up to eighty-year-olds. And, and so, um, Back Creek Valley is not becoming yet older. I mean, there's a lot of families moving back in, into Back Creek Valley. And, and Parks and, I know for us as young parents, when our kids were younger, that was the uh, it was just the go-to. It was like, hey, we're going to get the kids in soccer. Where do we go? Okay, we're going to go to Parks and Rec and enroll the kids in soccer. And all three of our kids, our oldest daughter played all the way up through high school. Uh, all three of the kids played at some level, um, Parks and Rec soccer.
Yeah, those, those arteries, you know, for transportation end up with cholesterol issues where you can't get through them. The, the result is you need to have activities in those areas so you don't have to do that travel.
You done now?
I, I'm done. Go ahead.
Mr. Wade.
Chris, thank you so much for wanting to apply to being a volunteer. And uh, I can, I can tell with your enthusiasm and your foresight that you would definitely be an asset to the, to the board in garnering uh expansion and the growth of that, of that organization. I, I really don't have any questions. I think everybody else has, has garnered my answers, so uh, I'll defer anything else to.
That's the bad part about being on the, the end of, of these discussions. I like the fact that, that you don't like status quo. You know, I would, I would ban on that. I mean, like, you know, just because it's been like this for 40 years or 20 years doesn't mean that's the best way to do things. So, I like the fact that you're willing to open up your views and it's, it's an exciting time, I think, for Parks and Rec in this county. You know, we're going through a, a strategic plan right now to see, you know, the needs of the county and try to meet all of those as, as well as the, the board itself is a pretty dynamic group of people. And uh, I honestly, I, I think you fit very well. And so I, I look forward, you know, to that opportunity of you serving with us.
Well, I just uh, I've been blessed to uh work with Chris and the congregation on, on some things over the, over the last several years. And, and I found, first thing I asked Pastor Chris was um, you know, on a project, who'd I deal with? You know, I'd deal with you or do I deal with the, the board or what? He said, no, you'd deal with me. And he was a man of his word. That's exactly who I dealt with and things went smooth. I, I'd like to, you know, make some statements more so than ask questions. I've seen that, been in Back Creek Valley now for, for uh over 30 years and I've seen your congregation grow. And it's, it's because um, and I've seen the building and the facilities grow. And it's because of dedication and, and the team that he puts together of um, you know, volunteers to come together, not only on the church, but all kinds of projects, um, and mission trips and everything else. I've never heard anything um negative about uh Chris. And um, I, I, I think he's a superb person. I think he would, not only from a, a youth-minded, business-minded person, but he's a, he's a good business guy financially as well. So, um, and there's nothing more to, that means more to a pastor of the church than the youth. So um, I'm delighted that you have applied.
Thank you.
Truly. I can see special events occurring.
Oh, yeah. It is crazy. I mean, I, I, I mean, just to let you know, Chris, uh, um, as Councilperson Gokunay has said, uh, you know, strategic plan is, is being developed. This council has committed $2.5 million to quality of life uh improvement. Um, it's, it's already an account waiting to, to, to move forward. We've recently bought additional 12 acres in Sportsman's Paradise. North of Sportsman's Paradise, we're looking to, for that to be our first riverfront uh park here before long. There's a park being worked on, on 10 acres in the north end, more from the private side that we'll be jumping in and, and hoping to, to help out with that. We just bought what, 22 acres, 25 acres on the south end for a new park, which ended up was a park back 80 years ago.
Yeah, 8000 years ago, yeah.
So um, that's great. We've had um, a family uh purchased the land beside Port House Farm to expand Port House Farm. We have the property at Allensville that we've owned for a long time and never done anything with. So there's a lot of things moving and, and.
But we don't have anything in Back Creek Valley.
No, you don't. And, and, you know, that's, that'd be, if we could find a way to get a trail along Back Creek, that'd be great, you know?
Even a park along Back Creek.
Kayaking. The first thing that come to my mind is get a group of young guys and girls to, you know, get a kayak one day and offer a shuttle. Start at one bridge, start at one bridge, float down to the next one and.
I'll take the kayak downstream. You bring it back up.
Think of, think of a park clean at one end and one at the other end where you could park, park your vehicle at this park and a small park at the other end where you could go back and forth and float the whole distance in a day or something. I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities. You just got to think them up.
And then engage the neighbors to have a grill out there so when you come back, you got a hot dog or something.
I like that idea.
All right. Well, Chris, I'm sure we'll uh be making a decision here before long. We do have a, a vacancy that's coming up 1st of August. So, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take that break real quick and we'll come back.
The Governor just had a meeting with all of the, was it all the county clerks that they had, the Governor had a meeting with the other day?
Yeah.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is, we're gonna go back and do any Board and Commission vacancies?
He's not ready for that yet.
Well, Board and Committee reports, Ambulance Board didn't meet, as you know, I always have meetings, but nothing with, nothing to report on. Yeah, so Board and Commission vacancies, any activity there?
Mr. President, if I may, and Anthony can correct me if I'm right, wrong, if I'm right, he can correct me too, he doesn't acknowledge that very well. You have the BZA to appoint. It's, you have five vacancies. Now, the bylaws, ordinance says that the members shall be appointed for the following terms: one for a term of one year, two for a term of two years, and two for a term of three years. And then, once the term expires on the first day of January, they can be reappointed for three-year terms with no limit.
Keeps the rotation.
So what I would recommend, if I disagree, if the Council decides to appoint BZA members today, that you appoint one member with an expiration date of 12/31/2021, which will be just for the remainder of this year, and then if they want to be reappointed, they would get a three-year term. You would do two members with an expiration date of 12/31/2022, and two members with an expiration date of 12/31/2023.
Is there a limit of how many terms they can serve?
There is none. There's no cap.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
There's no, also, there's no party requirements or anything like that?
Just residents.
Well, it states that they shall be free holders for residence
Right.
of the county, and three-fifths of such members, residents of the county for ten years, and then they have to live within their own jurisdiction.
Okay, all right, so let's start the conversation and make some appointments here today on the BZA. Let's, who wants to lead that conversation? Because I was out for most of the interviews.
We have one, one guy that was a previous member, what's his name, Dan, what's his last name?
Yes.
How you pronounce that?
Shaggy.
Shaggy? Shaggy?
Yeah, yeah, don't ask me because I messed it up.
Shaggy? Now, he was a previous member a few years back.
Mm-hmm.
So why not, why not put him in as a, if we put him in as a, as the one-year term, and then look at him again at the end of the year to put him on again, then he'll be in for four years, be able to help the rest of them go through the, the learning process.
He would be on for the remainder of this year.
Right.
And then would have to be reappointed again, January 1st of 2022.
Do you want to put that in the motion?
I'm thinking about it, hold on a second, you're rushing it now.
Oh, I don't want to do that.
Are we still?
Boy, he's a little jumpy today, isn't he?
Are we still having a, are we still talking about having a, a meeting, the first meeting with this board, when this board meets, to have legal counsel give them some type of?
Guidance.
Guidance.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
And they're also going to talk about the boundaries.
Right, yeah, all of that. What it takes to do that, no, good, good. Yes, I, I would like to make that a motion. Would you like to second that motion?
Well, at first, you gotta make the motion.
Okay, I, I make the motion to appoint Dan Shaggy to the one-year term, which expires at the end of December.
12/31/2021, second.
Motion been made, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
That's one.
All right, so you want to work on the two, two-year terms now?
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. John Bushman.
Okay. For a two-year term?
Would you, would you like to include Jeffrey Campbell to that and appoint both of them for the two-year term?
All right, so we have the motion that will expire in two, twelve?
12/31/2022.
Yes.
John Bushman and Jeffrey Campbell.
All right, have a motion on the floor, have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And now you have two, three-year terms.
I know Jeff. He was a criminal investigator, criminal justice investigator.
He actually, where my kids built their house in Brookside, I think it was a house that he had under construction, that burned down.
Okay, all right, so are you looking for him to be one of the three-year?
I was thinking that.
Okay.
Would, would you want to include Corey Rodriguez as well?
Either one, or, or either one.
There's two of them. All right, two, three-year candidates.
Yes.
That's what I said.
So is that what you want to do then, Corey and?
If you want to do Corey, I'll second the motion.
Corey's fine.
All right, so Jeff and Corey, Jeffrey Smith and Corey Rodriguez for the two, three-year terms. Is the motion, and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Those terms will end 12/31/2023.
Okay, all right. Any other activity? And Council President Goke, now you, you go hold off for the Criminal Justice Board right now?
I think they don't want to get involved with this. He's got till the end of, I'm afraid.
Okay, I'll take out as a yes, you're gonna hold off. Okay, all right, so next on the agenda is Mr. Davis, State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund 001.
Yes, sir. If the Council will recall, you did State Budget Revision Number One to General Fund last week, in which we adjusted the unencumbered fund balance to recognize the remaining one, $3.1 million in unrecognized unencumbered fund. Since then, we have gotten approval from the State Auditor's Office that everything that we did last week was correct. So we will be moving a million dollars into your rainy day fund, which will give you a rainy day fund balance of $7,115,045, which based on a revised budget of slightly more than $43.2 million, with the recognition of this new unencumbered fund, gives you a rainy day fund of about 16.44% of operating expenses, which is about two months, which is at the, the very lower lim, limit of where we want to be. We want to get it up higher, but certainly better than where we were 10 years ago. We also moved $1,500,000 in contingency.
I would like to use 11, your figure, $3.89.
Well, we've even exceeded that. We've moved $1.5 million into contingency, which we did by design, with the hopes of providing pay increases for our employees this year, which we will discuss in a few minutes. That gives us a, an unencumbered fund balance in contingency of $2,113,131. And then we put the remaining $673,720 in our building fund, our capital building fund, which now makes that slightly more than $1.1 million of uncommitted funds. This, State Budget Revision Number Two simply recognizes the checks and ACHs that we've received during the month of July. Since the beginning of the month, we have received 13 checks totaling $111,289. The majority of those checks were actually billed through IT services, and we deliberately delayed the billing so that we receive payments in this current fiscal year of $100,548. The largest check of that $100,000 was $70,496 from the Fire Board. The Fire Board invoice included primarily $48,800 for the Central Square mobile CAD licenses. We talked about Central Square earlier today. So we, Gary has been, Gary and his staff have been putting the mobile data terminals in all of our fire apparatus, and that's what a lot of the remaining cost is. In order for those to be effective, we have to have additional CAD licenses for those. So that's why that, the Fire Board expense was so high. So I'm recommending that we put $100,548 back into the IT budget, which will reimburse them for some expenses, for example, the, the Square D licenses that we've already purchased, and the remaining $10,741 in your contingency account.
All right, entertain a motion to approve State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund 001.
So move, Mr. President, second.
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. School Resource Officer?
Yes, sir. As the Council is aware, the four high schools in the county has, have school resource officers assigned to them. Martinsburg PD puts a school resource officer in Martinsburg High School, and then our Sheriff's Department assigns school resource officers to Musselman, Spring Mills, and Hedgesville. The contract is in your packet, but just some of the highlights, it's pretty standard boilerplate. Anthony has looked through it, and from a legal perspective, says it meets all the criteria that it needs to meet. The SRO will be on duty four days a week, suggested SRO duty hours are 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They shall be sworn law enforcement officers with at least two years of law enforcement experience. The SRO shall not transport students in their vehicles unless the student is a victim of a crime, under arrest, or there is an emergency circumstance exist. In consideration for the SRO, the Board of Education agrees to reimburse the Council for the full cost of the SRO program as determined by the Finance Officer of the County, which would be me, subject to the approval of the Board and an amount sufficient to fund the said program. The total estimated reimbursement cost for the term of this agreement are $52,000 for each of the three SROs assigned in the agreement, and they will be committed to 200 days during the 200-day school term. So in your, in the handout that I gave you today is a spreadsheet on a legal, legal paper that's titled Fiscal Year 21/22 Total Cost of School Resource Officers. I received an email at my request from Chief Young, who indicated that Brandon Humphrey with a hair date of 12/16/2013, John Robinson with a hair date of 10/1/18, Alvin Wilmer with a hair date of 5/25/2404. Calvin Wilmer with a hair date of five twenty-five, twenty-four oh four, will be the three school resource officers for the current fiscal year. I've provided you with their current compensation, not considering any wage adjustments that you may make later. Employer FICA, seven point six five percent, health insurance at eighty-three hundred, deputy retirement contributions, employer contribution of thirteen percent. Vacation, which will, the amount of accumulation would vary from deputy to deputy. One gets fifteen days, one gets eighteen days, and one gets twenty-four days. Eighteen days of sick leave and the twelve holidays. What's different with these employees, as you know, if we have an SRO who calls in sick, in accordance with the agreement, the sheriff is committed to replacing that employee. So, that means we're taking another employee off the street to replace this SRO. I think these are all valid expenses. Our workers' compensation rate for the current fiscal year for sheriff's deputies is three dollars and twenty-two cents per one hundred. And then we have the one point five nine rate modification due to our adverse experience. And you can see the total cost, salaries and benefits for the three resource officers. Humphrey, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-sevenths. Shawn Robinson, sixty-nine thousand, five eighty-nine, sixty-seven. And Calvin Wilmer, ninety thousand, seven eighty-five, seventy-eight. Then I took two hundred and sixty-day, five times fifty-two, that's two hundred and sixty-eight workdays, divided two hundred by that, that gives you a percentage of seventy-seven percent. Then I took the total cost, divided it, or multiplied it by seventy-seven percent. And you can see that the total cost of the three SROs is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Contract as presented would provide us with reimbursement of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which leaves a shortfall of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. What I would recommend to the council, and it's certainly up to you, and I think we all recognize the importance of SROs, and hopefully they're never needed, but they do provide, I think, a valid service. We are meeting with Dr. Kilkton and Dr. Murphy at four fifteen today. What I would recommend to the council, now this has already been signed by the sheriff and Dr. Murphy. It awaits Council President's token, signature, and your approval. Would recommend that we at least table this for a week so that we have an opportunity to discuss these numbers and see if there's any way that if we could get that reimbursement up a little bit.
Anybody having, is everybody okay with that? For Alan and I to talk about that at four fifteen today?
Yep.
Alright. Okay. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, compensation increases. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Last week, we discussed compensation increases and I recommended a minimum of seven percent. But as you know, I feel very strongly about the ten percent number. At that time, you asked me for some additional information. One of the things that you requested from me is some part-time employee compensation numbers and rosters, particularly as it applies to Berkeley Fire and our part-time firefighters. You also requested that I provide you with a cost of the seven percent and the ten percent increase and include Department Four Oh Six Assessor General Fund, which I had excluded last week. You asked me to provide you with, as it applies to Four Oh Six and Four Oh Seven, the roster, the employee staffing, as it was approved in March, with the compensation levels, what the compensation levels now are. Then I went further and gave you the dollar increase of the compensation adjustments that Mr. Hess made, the percentage increase. And then earlier this week, you asked me to provide the cost based on current compensation to migrate that workforce, and that's the only remaining workforce that we have on a thirty-five hour work week. To migrate that workforce from a thirty-five hour to a forty-hour work week. So, you have three separate, you have three separate spreadsheets, actually you have four separate spreadsheets. You have one titled Fiscal Year Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Part-Time Employees. And this is the part-time employees that currently own, that's on payroll as verified by the departments. You have the Assessor General Fund Four Oh Six, Chief of the Assessor General Fund Four Oh Six and Four Oh Seven Valuation Fund. You have the cost of a seven percent and a ten percent increase for full-time employees, including Department Four Oh Six. And then I've also given you a spreadsheet that says the total cost of entry-level public safety positions. I know we were focusing on fire, but I also, as in comparison, I gave you, I included the entry-level wage for a forty-hour per week deputy entry and a forty-hour per week qualitative entry. So, which one do you want to start with? Do you want to do part-time employees?
I think you have to do part-time employees first.
And I've asked Randy to come in. Randy and I had a long discussion and I know he has some feelings about it. And also I wanted to refer to Councilperson Go Knower because he and I met earlier this week. And I know he has some insight and certainly has a background with our career of firefighters.
Let me start off real quick though, because there's a lot of moving parts here. So, the math that we would do, the math that we would do for part-timers, and I know we put focus on firefighters. The math that we do there, would that not carry through to anyone that would have part-time? So, in other words, the circuit clerk, she has a part-time, or are we looking at a minimum hourly rate for their part-timers based on a full-time position?
You'll see that there's two part-time employees in the search department's office. There are two part-time in the tax office, two in the assessor, four in voter's registration. One in Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement and one Sheriff's Department Service Process.
Right, one is court security.
Typically allowed them to set that rate at anything they wanted it to. It just depends on how much additional funding you may want to give them.
Well, the only reason I ask that question, I don't want to only address our part-time staff.
No, and that's why I gave you this spreadsheet that has every, so for example, right now, the majority of our firefighters make thirteen point three an hour, which is our entry now for part-timers. We have one firefighter that makes fifteen seventy-five, but it's my understanding that he could be coming off the act of roster soon. So, the forty, the fifty-six hour per week firefighter entry, as you can see, is fifteen seventy-five an hour. Hypothetically, if you wanted to increase the entry-level wage for our part-time firefighters to be equal to the entry-level wage for a fifty-six hour firefighter, that would be an increase of roughly about fifty. No, two dollars and fifty cents.
So, you're talking without benefits, alright?
And that's what I was getting ready to say.
So, you're just looking at the wage without the purrs, all you're looking at is the wage.
So, and I'd like to put this on record because this is very important. The fifty-six hour firefighter makes on average fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents an hour, but his total compensation, his or her, is twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents an hour.
Right, now that's entry level.
A four, yeah, a forty-hour entry-level firefighter is compensated at nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents an hour.
Nineteen sixty-three, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Nineteen dollars and sixty-three.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I was looking at, nineteen sixty-three, but the full compensation is thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. So, I want to make sure that our full-time employees' total investment and not only be looking at the hourly compensated rate. That, I think all of us have to look at that, not just firefighters, but across the board. Because our total compensation package, as you can see, is what, in, is about forty percent on top of the wage. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Mr. Davis, you said early on, years ago, that we sent out a letter once in a year or something about-
In terms of compensation.
Full compensation.
Yes, sir.
Because people forget about the value of that full compensation, so.
And we hope to do that. The one that we sent, and I'm ashamed to say that the last one we sent out was in two thousand and six. That's how long it's been.
I was going to say, because I didn't remember seeing any of them.
And I did all of that through Excel on a spreadsheet. And I printed it out on a copy or so, and that was before the, we had the IT department that we had. So, I think with this new software, we're going to be-
I was going to say, that could be printed out almost instant.
So, not to get too far lost in the weeds here, what we're talking about is if, if I understand correctly, is that if we set a part-time precedence for increasing the part-time wages to a value, where the conversation is that if we do it for one, we're going to set the same precedence for all, for funding purposes.
For elected officials, right.
So, if we, if we set it at, if we set it at an hourly rate of a forty-hour employee without benefits, that that's what you calculate the, the-
At the entry level.
The part-time rate at, without the benefits, that we're going to do the same thing, but we just need to determine that we're going to do that at the, with the fire employees, what rate we're going to do that with them, because there's two different rates there.
Well, I wouldn't go higher, and again, that's just me talking, I wouldn't go higher than the fifty-six hour hourly rate.
Right, and I understand that, I'm just-
Again, but I'll defer to Councilperson Go Knower and Randy. Randy, you want to come up?
And we're talking, we're using this as an example because this is, this is under our umbrella, so we're very familiar with that. And we've said for years that shame on us to be able to send someone into fighting fire at thirteen twenty-five.
And I don't know how many of you travel down eighty-one south, but Quad Graphics has the trailer that sits there in front of the old DM, and they just changed their recruitment banner. They now pay sixteen seventy-five to thirty-three dollars an hour. That's what they're all-
You're pushing a whole lot more funding.
Well-
Yeah, I can, yeah, it would be.
So, Eddie, you want to?
Well, you know, I did tune in to your discussion last week while I was on vacation, just so I didn't fall too far behind. And, you know, sitting around, I'm thinking about the opportunity to give people pay raises and I'm so glad that we're in a financial position to be able to do that. But at the same time, I was concerned that we're going to be looking at paying a part-time employee more than what we were a full-time employee who has committed and dedicated their career to Berkeley County. So, you know, if we look at bringing our part-timers up, which we need to do, if we brought them in at the fifty-six hour hourly rate, bring them from thirteen and a quarter up to fifteen seventy-five, I think, I think we've done our duty and we've not created a morale issue in the department where guys are sitting across from another, you know what I'm saying? You're making more than I am, and you don't even work here, you know, but part-time or a couple of days a month or whatever. So, the value of what your thought process is, I like, but you're going to create a lot of issues in the firehouse.
And I respect that. I just want to make sure that the full-time staff understands that our investment in them is forty percent more than it is even if somebody being compensated the same amount of money per hour. And the part-time staff is very, very important historically. Now, not as important as it was because we've got more full-time positions and less dependable about the part-time. But when we need a part-time person, we need him.
Yeah, and it was critical in us being able to do that in the beginning because of financial impact, to be able to put a part-timer with a full-timer. You know, that was critical in getting this department up and running. You know, but now, you know, I think that, you know, I think I checked with Randy earlier in the week. I'm sorry, there's Lieutenant Sawyer, who does the scheduling. In September right now, you know, providing, nobody's taking vacation off of Orsic Day, that he has, he's looking at filling five part-time slots for the month of September. So, you know, it's a minimal amount of time we're covering now as compared. But at the same time, and you just heard Mr. Urban say the same thing, it depends where you are in your, in your career. Early on, you know, you got to have that money, you know, you don't, you're not concerned about those benefits. You're not concerned about the retirement and healthcare, because you don't get sick and you, you know, you don't even consider retirement. But we all know now how valuable those things are and very, very much appreciate it. But to be able to place this person above that person, I think we're making a mistake and we're creating somebody a lot of problems.
I think that argument that you're talking about, that's a possibility that they're going to sit across from each other and talk about it. I think you're talking about the younger people in the workforce. I think the aging population in the workforce in those departments is going to, will realize the value of what the purrs are that they're receiving. But I understand the thought process, that's for sure.
But I will also tell you that our employees, at the end of the day, benefits are important, particularly when you get my age.
Especially if you're an age-
Especially at my age, the death benefit is particularly important. But they sit around and they compare paychecks. Years and years, before I came here and created this employer, we gave pay increases, employees in the same classification making the same rate of pay, we're comparing paychecks in the computer rounding. And the one, the one lady at the end of the year was going to make a quarter less than the other based on the round, and they called and complained to me because the one employee was making a quarter more than they were. Not a quarter of an hour more for the total year of quarters. I walked down street and gave her a quarter. And that's the extreme, but still people, you'd be surprised.
I'm a builder.
But there's, there's a value, there's a value in that permanent employees, for being permanent employees should be rewarded additionally. And if we, and if we do all the purrs, then we're not rewarding those permanent employees for being permanent employees with the purrs package. So, I understand that process and I don't have a problem with that, that thought process at all.
But two things I'd like to add. Number one, you know, you generally don't hear much of our employees until you start on the pay raise, then be ready for all the phone calls. Second, is that I've made a, I made a statement back six years ago probably that the difference, probably started ten years ago, because I remember having a talk with our finance department back then was, what's the difference, you know, are we getting, are we working thirty-five or forty hours? And we went back and forth for several weeks and ended up saying, no, we're working thirty-five and not forty. Because some people would say, well, we're getting paid good lots. No, you're not.
We had that conversation when we were running against each other in the very first debate that we had back when you, when you ran the first time.
So, so we got that squared away. And then the next thing that I was thinking about is, I'd like to do it, Mr. Davis, or like to have you to do it, or finance to do it, is do an evaluation of our sick days, because our sick days and vacation days are very generous, right? Because one of the things, twelve- Um, because one of the things, twelve point five percent plus, right, twelve point five percent increase in pay to go from thirty-five to forty. So you're getting paid to work the extra five hours, you're not, some people think that they're going to work forty and get paid thirty-five, that's not the case. Um, so that was twelve point five. And then if we evaluate the day, it's the sick days that we have, kind of, kind of maybe either look at that and readjust that, or return back around and maybe we can compensate for the new hires to do less sick days and more pay. You know, but we can't, it's hard to kind of make differ, different things. Because it's going to be way too hard for finance to keep up, but.
It makes a huge difference, though, if you take, if you take the one vacation. Now, we just approved, not too long ago, we just approved an additional vacation, um, after the governor did, for everybody. So that one additional, what's that?
Holiday.
Or holiday, holiday, yeah, the same thing, it's all, it's all a day off.
I think last year we done two of them, forced to do.
But for every one we do, every one we do, we have to hire one more person to do the same amount of work for every two hundred and sixty people we have working. So that, that, that one day costs us one and a half employees that we have to hire and more to accomplish the same amount of work just by giving them one day.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but looking at the value of a sick leave, truly, you know, you don't want to encourage them to use every one of their sick days annually so they don't lose money, so the the true value of their sick day is not until they retire, where it can be attributed to their retirement.
That's exactly right, and that's how, that's how people your age and at our age thinks. But we also had the conversation that when you're young, you're invincible.
Yes.
Right? So how do you accommodate? How do you accommodate trying to recruit? You know, you gotta remember what we've always said on our boards and commissions and and this council. What got us here isn't what's going to keep us here, but yet we've never looked at how we do payroll. How do we, how do we comp, not payroll, but how do we comp, our compensation? So, so, you know, maybe we need to look at that, maybe we don't need to figure that. You know, let's put it this way, if if you're working privately and you had to to get health insurance. For Jackie and I, through council, it's about fourteen thousand dollars a year, and we got, we got to make up the difference. If I was, if I was twenty-one years old, twenty-two years old, it'd probably be crap, what, two thousand dollars a year?
How much?
Right?
I think.
But yet our benefit would would compensate at eighty-four hundred dollars a year. So, you know, we, maybe we need to, not now, but and this isn't a conversation for today, but we we may maybe need to look at someone that and see how we can, as, as, as Chris Jones says, maybe we can fill it upon and make it look, make it look better or be better.
I don't know, but I think, Randy, you've solved a lot of our questions.
Randy, what's your thought?
I I agree with Councilman Delia, you know, we're not paying the part-time, uh, employees benefits. So there's something to be said there, but I'll have to, I'm leaning towards agreeing with Mr. Davis and Councilman Gokenhour for, for one reason, the exact reason that Council Goken, Gokenhour spoke about. But also, and I can only speak for the part-time firefighters. So when we hire part-time firefighters, we're held to a different standard to our full-time firefighters. Our full-time firefighters are hazmat certified technicians, they are EMPs, they are SWIFT related technicians. Our part-time employees are not held to that standard. When we hire full-time employees, they also go through a written test examination and a physical agility test to to be able to move for the next step. Our part-time firefighters are not held to that standard. So ju- just keep that in the back of your mind, you know, in making those decisions. But our full-time employees and our part-time employees, part-time firefighters, is held to a different standard.
Makes a difference, that makes a difference, there's a commitment there, uh, to be, show up every day as well. Whereas part-time comes as they feel they want to.
Right.
And and the cost to increase, and I'll use Berkeley Fire as an example. Say you want to increase the wages of fifteen seventy-five, or whatever the entry level wage for fifty-six hour firefighters comes. I'm, I'm fairly certain at running the numbers that we can do it with current within budget only because we're loo, we're using less and less part-time employees. And this, this cost that I've given you, that the fore-rang in column is based on nine hundred and eighty-eight hours a week. Um, we don't use part-time employees, we don't use everybody on this list nineteen hours a week.
No.
Um, so looking at, and I, and I only went back six months. Looking at the part, what the part-time, what part-time employees at Berkeley Fire have worked over the past six months, I'm fairly certain, ninety percent certain, that we can do it. Uh, we can increase their hourly rate without, without adjusting the part-time wage allocation.
Let me, let me test your old memory, it's not that long term. The sheriff was just in here to increase the pay for part-time staff in the tax office. What did that go to?
Thirteen fifty.
Okay.
That's the new rate I just.
That's, that's the, that's the new one we just, okay, all right. So.
Yeah, this is rate also payroll.
Right. Another thing that we're not even talking about here, and and obviously it needs to be part of the conversation, in my opinion, and I agree a hundred percent that we need to compensate employees and we look at part-time and all that. But we also have spent almost a million dollars on increases in the sheriff's department in the last six months. And if you look at that plus what we're looking at right here, we're talking about a ten percent addition to our reoccurring expense that the county has to budget every year with, with all these numbers.
Well, that, that, that million dollar number, that hasn't been recovered. That's been equipment upgrades.
I I understand.
Yeah, that, so, and and a lot of that was in last fiscal year.
Right.
So that's, that took away from our unencumbered fund balance. This council has treated the sheriff's department very well since January.
Oh, for the last ten and a half years.
That's, that's probably three or four percent. I mean, even if, even what we're looking at right here, uh, is probably a seven percent increase, um, in our reoccurring expense with the payroll.
So recommending again.
No, 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 I'm talking about overall seven, I'm not, I'm talking, I understand you're recommending ten percent to the payroll, but I'm talking our whole budget. This is probably going to affect the budget by about seven percent of reoccurring expense.
Five percent.
No, our budget's about forty-two million dollars total.
Yeah, go less than that.
Yeah.
But, but.
We weren't over, we were under forty million dollars.
Well, but we added the unencumbered fund balance to it. So our unencumbered fund balance adjusted is forty-two million and change.
Yeah, we were thirty.
We were thirty-nine and change.
Right.
So, so.
So you're still probably, well, it's still over five percent then.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
That's still less than inflation.
It's less than five percent. But, um, so Dan brings up a good point, and I told, told Alan this morning that I will make a comment in public session about this, is that people have to understand. When we first got here, it was a gem, a Gemini, um, because you came in late, or did you come to, you came in later, Randy? Um, was that, um, I had a discussion with Mr. Davis about when, when we're in a recession, um, inflation is going to be minimal. Actually, have, it probably rolls the other way. Um, so, you know, people were always very appreciative of having a job with benefits in that timeframe. When the economy becomes strong, you're going to fight like crazy to keep up with the wages. And this is the largest inflation rate we've, I've ever seen in my life, right? So, so we're in that, we're, we're to that point now where we're fighting to keep up with the pace scale. We got caught up, now we got to keep up. And as you know, we called up with our deputies with the city of Martinsburg at the entry level, now we're behind ten percent.
And that was fiscal year.
Right, so we're not trying to, the, the Deputy Association asked us just to be competitive. And we did that, um, so, and we want to stay competitive, we're not trying to get out in front, we just want to stay competitive. Um, but at the same time, as Councilperson Delia has said, you know, this is, this is big money. I mean, it's going to end up being a couple million dollars, pretty much, so.
Be over a couple million dollars.
So we turn back around and and I just want to make sure that employees understand that we're going to make that commitment. But when this economy turns back down, um, as we've done before, we'll have to tighten up the belts, not saying it would take away any wages, but, you know, we may not need as many positions. Are we, you know, so I just got to put that out there.
If you remember, when we did have that downturn in the economy, it was what we did with the operating budgets.
Cut nine percent.
We adjusted operating budgets, we reduced operating budgets across the board. And and we identified non-essential positions that we eliminated.
Then we do eight or nine percent off operating, but nine percent.
Nine percent off operating, and we eliminated positions.
Right.
Which was, which was not easy, it was painful what we did.
Right.
And and we will do this, I wouldn't be here recommending this if I didn't think that.
Oh, I think we could, I, I, I think we can support it, I don't see that problem. I'm just throwing that out as caution, because if the whole thing together, if I'm, if I'm ending it up right, it's going to be, it's going to be close to two and a half million dollars for the whole thing.
And I apologize for my statement, because I didn't think of that, I thought it was.
But, but if.
Ten percent, if you include.
But, but with that being said, I'm just making a note here, because we gotta, we gotta look towards the rest of the year of, of additional, uh, requests to increase funding. So that, I'm just saying, and like I said, I'm, I'm supportive of it. I'm just saying we got to really look at what comes after this when we're spending this much money right now.
If you go to ten percent for full-time employees, including Department four oh six, the cost will be one million, seven sixteen, nine twenty-six.
Right.
If the impact of increasing part-time wages will be minimal, and we can, we can absorb that within the budget. So if you're looking at one point seven million, which I would strongly recommend, although.
And what's the inflation rate for the first six months of this year?
Five.
So it's projected to be ten eight.
Actually, expected to be over thirteen.
So you're talking right around two million then?
About two million.
Right.
Um, but you know how I feel about the part, and that includes Department four oh six, and you know how I feel about, about that. But that's a decision for the council.
All right, so, so we're not here all day, I, I think, um.
There's a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah, I know, um, so, part-time.
Randy, you're doing a good job, I have to.
How about if the council agrees to increase part-time wages?
Across the board.
Across the board, equal to no less than.
I was going to do, let me say this real quick, um, I'm going to say fifteen fifty before the ten percent bump.
For firefighters?
Across the board.
Across the board.
Anybody that that's a part-time employee, if elected, we're going to allocate that much money to a part-time position. Doesn't matter whether it's a firefighter or circuit clerk, assessor or whatever.
And then they can allocate.
They can allocate where they want.
What I would do is break it out, full-time allocation, part-time allocation.
Right.
Additional allocation.
Right.
So you're just talking about firefighters right now, and then, and I agree with that.
Every, every part-time employee we have in the county, doesn't matter whether it's a county council employee or any elected official, uh, will set a ba, a minimum fifteen fifty before the increase of percentage of pay. Everybody all right with that? So we need a motion in. Again, or or we'll, we'll discuss it and then we'll do my motion all one time, is that?
So, okay, so you're, so you're saying, so you're saying do the same thing with voter registration, with emergency, everything, right?
Yep, that's the minimum. So the one that this sign has, it's a circuit clerk, it's fifteen ninety, that, that they, they would ju, they'd just get to ten percent.
Right. All part-time. Ten percent, but no less than.
No, less than fifteen fifty before, prior to the ten percent. So fifteen fifty is going to end up being ten percent above that, seventeen something.
So what, what I do, so we have no, I thought we had a position in the, um, in the prosecutor's office that was part-time, we didn't?
That was a summer intern.
Okay.
Remember you approved the summer intern and chief work, even she makes twenty dollars an hour, but just for the summer.
Right.
That's all.
So, so we're going to pay that position a different rate than what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's a, that's a summer intern position, that's not considered regular part-time.
Well, plus.
These are all regular part-time.
Plus, Mr. Davis is saying that person is twenty dollars an hour anyways, it doesn't really matter. Doesn't matter, they're already making twenty dollars.
I understand, I understand.
Motion on the increase.
Why don't we just do, yeah.
First part of the motion, or the first part of this motion, we need to increase all part-time employees from fifteen.
To allocate the funds.
To allocate the funds.
Fifteen fifty.
You want to do that separate, that way we'll have.
Probably should, because it's a, it's, that's why I want to do part-time first, because it's a process. And then, then that way, they get the ten percent just as, or whatever we decide upon.
Right, okay.
All right, so you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, allocate the funds to increase the part-time pay to fifteen fifty now.
For all.
Regular part-time. All regular part-time employees.
All right, so we have a motion before we have a second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries five to zero. All right, now, full-time employees and the percentage of, you're looking at seven percent, you're looking at ten percent, need a motion.
Requesting, strongly recommend that you can. I'm also agree with that.
Well, I, I think, I, I'm going to say this, um, I think that we, I think that we need to allocate the funds for four oh six. Uh, but there's some, um, conversations that I'd like to have, or, um, in that department. Um, so I'm not opposed to putting four oh six in a contingency and, and, and have conversations with the assessor. And then, but what, whatever we do, it's all going to be back to July one.
So all employees save the four oh six and four oh seven for now, ten percent effective July first.
Right, but allocate four oh six and put it in a contingency.
Just like I do all the other.
Because there's some things that's happened that I want to work through, and I think we all, you know, we've all voiced concerns about it. Um, we've all voiced concerns about thirty-five to forty-hour work week over the years, um, and, um, I mean, I, I, so.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, all right, so anybody want to make a motion in that, on that behalf?
I'll make a motion that, that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Davis with the ten percent uh, pay increase for the full-time employees, uh, with the exception, I don't really have actually an exception, but the, uh, Assessor Fund out of four oh six and four oh seven will be placed in contingency.
Four oh six.
Four oh six.
Four oh six be placed in contingency and effective July first.
And we'll, we'll aggressively work on that, but, but it'll all be back to, yeah, July first.
Yeah, it's, it's critical for, for those employees, you know, to be quite honest with you. You know, I spoke to several different employees at different departments, uh, to get their opinions of some of this. And, you know, our morale issues there in that department. We, we need to address some of this, uh, issues, so, so that department doesn't suffer.
Well, we'll do our part.
Yes.
Well, and you've had a lot of turnover there recently, which, you know, could be directly attributed to, um, the, the amount of hours worked.
And and you've seen the, the, the analysis that I've given you. There's enough payroll dollars available without the pay increase to migrate, and and I'm talking about four oh six. We can migrate those employees from four, from thirty-five to. we can migrate those employees from 40, from 35 to 40 hours with no impact on the budget.
And we've, we've had that conversation in the past, and, and.
Didn't get any.
Well, and, and to, the, the thought process is that we just need to work through it. We need to work through it, talk about it, come up with some kind of solution.
Yeah.
And I would tell you that earlier in the week, I was at the, I was, personally was taken in the middle of the road, I mean, I wasn't on the bottom, I wasn't on the top, but since talking to several different people, especially with the inflation rate that is currently at today, you know, when you go to the grocery store, everything's higher, when you go to a home improvement store, everything's higher, you know. Now, taking into consideration, and, and, you know, I asked earlier this morning, you know, as, as long as we can do this without increasing taxes or increasing the speed, you know, I think that's critically important, you know, that, that we don't increase at, at this particular time, so, and, and, you know, Mr. Davis says that you look very, were very sound, and, and I trust his judgment on that report.
I will say that this, this council's done a really good job in not increasing the tax rate. I don't want people in the audience to compare, to get confused with increased tax bill versus tax rate.
Right.
We can't do anything about, we just talked about these people getting a bump in salary because of inflation. We can't, we can't do anything about the real estate price inflation. As we all know, we talk about it, 400% increase in material, well, what houses are selling for this year, prime example about approximately a starter home from what I'm being told from, from some appraisers, that, that were $180,000 a year, or a year and a half ago, six months ago, it's $260,000 now. It's not any fault of anything other than supply and demand, and the cost of material.
But that's a benefit to our residents here as well, because the residents end up with that increased amount in their, and most of them, it's the largest investment they'll ever make, and so that, that, that continued to raise as well.
It does, the, the problem with it is.
But they still have pay tax.
They, they look at that as a, as an increase in taxes, and it's not, it's an increase in value.
You've actually decreased the.
We have, we have, so, alright.
We only increased it one time, and that was to compensate salaries for the prosecutor.
And then we rolled them back.
Yep.
Alright, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second, we had our discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that the, that the minutes reflect five to zero. Alright, so, thank you, Randy, for your input. I think that concludes the compensation set.
That's all I have, sir.
Now, any, no need for executive session?
No, sir.
Alright, any items from the public?
I would like to personally say thank you to all of you.
Are you the public now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right up here.
I would like to personally say thank you to all of you today, I know it was a lot of hard work that went into this, I've seen Mr. Davis work for the last several weeks.
Tracy.
That's my lunch, Tracy, have him just take it over in the office, please.
Maybe I wasn't sure where to go, it said.
Hey, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got big old tape over his nose.
I know, Mr. Davis has worked diligently to get the, the raises for the employees, and help the employees, as well as watching out for council and council budgets, but a lot of, a lot of time into this, a lot of energy, looking at a lot of spreadsheets, and appreciate all of his work, all of his efforts for all of the employees. I've talked to several department heads over the last week, as he's been going through this, and they know that you're gonna work on this, and I know that many of the department heads, not just officials, I mean, not just employees, are gonna be very thankful, because this is, we can really help them in their retention and, and their recruiting, because they're gonna put them in a great position.
I'll say, our employees are working their tail off. I mean, you know, they're, they're doing a great job, and I'll stand by that statement all day long, and, and retention is very important.
Yes, and I know, not just the employees, the department heads are also, I'm very appreciative, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done with this, and they did a lot of hard work in this, and that was not an easy decision, and we all very much appreciate it.
Yeah.
And we've been having discussions about this, and every time we have a discussion, it generates another question, we throw something away.
Look at all these spreadsheets we have this week, instead of last week.
I was in here the other day, and he's like, you got, you got, you got anything else you want me to do when I get done with all this?
You killed me.
As employees, it sees that all behind the scenes, and everybody else is not seeing.
It worked on him so bad, he pulled all his hair out.
All of the hard work.
Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks for all the hard work.
And thank you for supporting your, your employees.
Well, you know, when, when we do, when.
You did a good job back there.
I'm sorry, not, not when we do, but when you do, or, or finance, or IT does the, the sheet of total compensation, I wouldn't mind going back six years, and let them know where they are and where they are today.
Why six, why not 10?
No, six, six is fine.
How long you been here, Alan?
I think you're 16.
Okay, why not 16, he, he remembers that.
Well, that's when, that's when we was coming out of recession, that's when we went to 35 to 40 hour work week, that's when we gave, I mean.
I get it, it's easy to lose track of where you're at.
If I was, if I was the guest, I would say that employees, our employees are doing 40% better today than what they were six years ago.
Pretty close.
I hope they are.
Your, your employees already know.
And I'd like to put it on record, by the way, I'm turning my phone off to everybody out there.
I swear they do.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The, the year that we gave a pay raise, Mr. Davis went on vacation, so guess where all his called, me, and people fussing.
We actually put your cell phone number.
Did you? Alright, cool. Alright, Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I'm due to recess.
We are recessed.